This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 30, 2020, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 10, 2020. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
Council President Mathieu Brown?
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you for all who have joined us for our Town Council meeting Tuesday, October 26. I do want to open the meeting with the land acknowledgement. We recognize that we reside on the land of the Lulapi people, and we honor and give thanks to them for stewarding these lands for generations. We do not have a presentation at this time, so Council colleagues, this is the first that we jump right into council liaisons. So Councilwoman Castellino?
Sure. Thank you, Council President. So I'll start off with my Downtown Alliance report. We're pleased to announce that with our grant writer, we worked to get the Cooperative Marketing Grant for almost $17,000. So we'll be able to utilize that for much-needed marketing, not only just through the downtown, but also for the township. So we're excited that we received that grant opportunity. Not so great news, we didn't get through the first round of the Neighborhood Preservation Program Grants, so a little disappointed with that, but there will be another round down the road in a few months, so we'll work with our grant writer to see what we need to do. And we thought we had really good projects, looking at the other towns that were awarded so far. They also had some great projects, a very competitive program, and we hope to, you know, continue to work on that, so we could get that in the future. Also, the PR Commission is working with Ms. Brill and the Downtown Alliance. I want to thank all the PR Commissioners, they've been working really hard. They're working on, and Mr. Fagan as well. We've been working and focusing on the West Orange mobile app. We're hoping to launch that the beginning of the new year. A lot of work has gone into it, uploading all the data. Right now, we're trying to upload all the restaurants onto the app, and we look forward to launching that in a month or two, when Ms. Brill will do a presentation when we're ready with that endeavor. So we're just going to keep working and moving forward. Recreation news, tomorrow night is the West Orange Community Band performing at 7:30 PM at Liberty Middle School. If you haven't gotten a chance to see the community band, they are awesome, and led by Lynette Shard and company, and just if you get a chance just to go out and listen to them, it's just an enjoyable evening. So I hope folks could get out there. Some Halloween fun, this Saturday, October 30, the Recreation Department will be sponsoring their Halloween festivities at Jenny Dunkle Pool between 6:00 and 9:00 PM, costume parade, haunted train ride, Halloween movies, some more as a popcorn, pumpkin patch, a good time held by all. And we want to also give a shout out to the farmer's market, they've been doing a great job this past year, and they've just been doing, you know, for their fall theme. So come out on Saturday, hopefully the weather will be cooperative and all will be well. And on a personal note, I want to reach out and thank my colleagues for attending a tough meeting last week with the folks who were moved out of their apartments due to that crisis. Unfortunately, I couldn't attend, I popped my head in that evening. I want to thank and reach out, I thought you did, to the West Orange Athletic Hall of Fame Committee. Every other year, the West Orange Athletic Hall of Fame honors various athletes that have gone through the West Orange school system, and it's, I believe it was, what year was this, 25th induction ceremony? And we wanted to thank and honor Lou and Joe Di Pasquale from the West Orange PAL for all their years of service. To the PAL, over 40 years, they've been involved in the program, they were honored, and rightfully so, as a community, as the community awards recipients. Peter Flyingback, congratulations, 1982 alumni, Troy Henderson, 1989, Ryan McPherson, 2005. He was also, he's also a fireman, firefighter of ours, David Joyceal, 2007, Gwenna Brew, '09, and also the Boy Soccer Team of 2003, led by Doug Nevin. So congratulations to all, and a special shout out, my son Anthony Castellino from 2009 was also honored. So I thank Stefan Zekala, Catherine Connors, Mr. Moore, and Mr. Delapier for all their hard work on the committee, and a special shout out to Coach John Jacobs, who said some great, beautiful words on behalf of my son Anthony. It was great to see Coach Jakes, and to get up there and hear him speak again was awesome. So just wanted to give a shout out. And a special award is going to be named for the coaches, starting the next inductee ceremony, the Joe Surianno Coaches Award, which was appropriately named. So it was great memories, great night, and thank all that were involved in the activity. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you. Good evening, all. Michelle, thank you for that information about the Hall of Fame. Congratulations to all of the inductees. And 40 years is a long time, and they've done an outstanding job with town. And congratulations to your son and everyone else involved. I wanted to pick up where Councilwoman Castellino left off about the residents at 275 Northfield, and just to commend the administration, how everyone stepped up to cooperate and put all of these gears in motion to help the residents there. And Council President, I know that you were instrumental in setting up the GoFundMe page, the Township's West Orange, at the Township's page on westorange.org for the Mayor Sunshine Fund. I know that the donations there are being used for lodging and food for the residents that were displaced. I was, the Dollar Store, I went to the Dollar Store, and I want to publicly thank them. They are willing to donate all of the cardboard boxes that they have to help the residents and to free the cost, actually, of the residents having to pack up their boxes. I bought a case of packing tape so that they can, I know by appointment only, but pack up their belongings as they maneuver through this. And on Wednesday evening, I was really pleased that I attended the West Orange Women's Club. They had their in-person meeting on Wednesday up at the United Presbyterian Church, and I encouraged and voted for the proposal to include a budget item of $1,000 to be donated to the Mayor Sunshine Fund. So I thought that was outstanding and generous, so I wanted to publicly thank them for that. Luckily, the West Orange Arts Council has a really exciting exhibit going on right now, up until November 28, Messages and Street Art. That would be at the West Orange Art Center, located at 551 Valley Road. If you visit westorangearts.org, you can find all the upcoming information and the hours of operation and gallery hours with homemade gifts in their gift shop. Please visit w-o-arts.org. West Orange Environmental Commission is meeting tomorrow evening, October 27, at 7:00. You can visit the township webpage for the Zoom link to attend. Planning Board meets next Wednesday, November 3, at 7:30. That's also, the Zoom link will be available on the township webpage. The application that is on the agenda is for Chairman Williams' store, to be located on Main Street. The West Orange Chamber of Commerce, their next virtual Biz 2.0 event will be on November 17 at noon. Again, visit westorangechamber.com to find out the link there. The guest speaker is Cheryl Cattell. The title of her presentation, it's From Noon to One, is 10 Things You Can Do to Rock Your LinkedIn Profile. It's free. Visit westorangechamber.org, I'm sorry, westorangechamber.com. And the following week, already November 24, will be the annual Chamber Community Thanksgiving Luncheon, from noon to one. Sponsorships and donations to that event will support the Holy Trinity food pantry. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Rutherford?
Thank you, Council President. Wanted to begin with the joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties, that is what I call, for lack of a better term, Sewer Commission. We have gone through our budget for next year, and it looks like there will be just under a 2% increase, so we need to be prepared for that. I think that's actually pretty good and in line with most of the prior years, with the exception of some special events that have happened in, you know, outlier years. Open Space Committee is meeting again on 11:03, and we have been advocating on behalf of residents throughout town where there are open space issues. Our last meeting, we spoke about two particular neighborhoods that need some space protected, and that is the absolute right place for it. For those of you in town that think there's a part of your neighborhood that needs it as well, we hear frequently about the Mount Pleasant Forest, but there are other spaces. Please feel free to join us on 11:03, where we can hear your concerns and see if there's something we can do to help advocate for you. The Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board is going to meet on 11:10, and that group was awarded the Champions of Complete Streets Award, so kudos to all of them for the hard work and the recognition that they've received. Wanted to just do two things that aren't necessarily related to my liaison position. One is I wanted to compliment the West Orange Young Democrats, in particular, Barom Meritu, for their continued advocacy with regard to the Civilian Complaint Review Board. They had a rally at Town Hall last week where they were advocating for subpoena power. It is part of a series of rallies that they are planning in and around Essex County, and I just applaud those young folks because they are dogged in their determination, and they are serious about their goals. So kudos to them, and I encourage them to keep up the good work. Also want to remind us that Election Day is November 2. If you can, please vote early, but certainly make sure that you get out and vote. This election, I know the national news isn't giving us much, there's only two governor's races up this year. Virginia is getting all the attention, but we need to be mindful not to take anything for granted, so please make sure you get out and vote, let your voice be heard in this election. And again, you can vote early, or you can vote on Election Day, which is November 2. That concludes, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Council President. Hello, West Orange. I'm happy to make a liaison report on the Historic Preservation Commission, submitted its recommendations for historical designations. There were five different properties to the Planning Board for their review and approval, and we'll get that update at our next meeting. The Rent Leveling Board and the Renter Board did not meet for the month, and will commence their meetings in November at their regular scheduled dates. Those meetings are virtual, and the times are on the westorange.org website. Been working with residents at 275 Northfield Avenue, would like to encourage all of us as West Orange residents to continue to support with any type of monetary donation that you can, to the GoFundMe or to the Sunshine Fund, direct through the Mayor's Sunshine Fund. They're in desperate need of support. I have worked with some of our residents, constituents, and business owners, and still working with them. I'm happy to salute Arum Carpets, located on Main Street, for a $1,000 contribution to the Mayor's Sunshine Fund. They are desperately looking for other places to live, so if there are any residents who know or have any apartments, even outside of the West Orange area, please let me know, let us know. We're looking to support them in every capacity, and it is exactly the right thing to do. I would like to commend our administration for all that they have done to support the residents during this unexpected, just devastating situation. I think we have stepped up in a most commendable way to make sure we take care of, provide meals, lodging, just whatever incidentals for the residents who have been impacted by the relocation. If you know of any support systems, please also reach out to Laura Van Dyke, who is doing an amazing job supporting the residents as well. The October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so I'd like to salute breast cancer survivors and supporters. As always, just continue to fight the good fight. And also, October is Domestic Violence Month, so I would like to ask all of those who do not understand or know anything about domestic violence to just pick up a little news article, Google it, and just continue to support those who are impacted. Council President, that completes my liaison reports and additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you to all of my council colleagues for all of your updates, and I will share a few updates. I did attend the Human Relations Commission meeting last night. I really like how they are divided themselves in subcommittees and are able to do a lot of outreach, a lot of programming, they're planning their Dr. Martin Luther King celebration. And they also recognize, and Rabbi Tobin, Dr. Jones lifted up the mayor, and I want to do the same. I did it on my social media page and on all of the other available outlets for social media, but I think it's really important, when any one of us, and we all know the seats that we run for sometimes are going to take some low blows, if you will, and the mayor certainly did, take that from a lot of the, not a lot, some of the communities. It's not fair to say a lot, because there's 50,000 plus of us, but some of the community members were really negative on his post when it came to his acknowledgement and proclamation for Indigenous Day. And I have to say personally, and I've shared this with you all, council colleagues, you all know my position coming in, I've seen so much growth in the mayor, and I am really proud that he is an individual who, for lack of understanding, lack of exposure, like so many, didn't really understand the need to see color, didn't really understand the need to advocate for social justice and equity and inclusion. He's come a long way, and when I heard his video, honestly, I thought that somebody helped him write that, but he took that upon himself to do his research and to learn about that culture, and he got a lot of blowback from that. And I just want to say that the reason that we're doing these things is so that there are so many communities that are not and have not been acknowledged, and that's what this is about. It's not about not acknowledging, or substituting, or one-upping one culture over the other. I just really think it's important for all of us to be able to give credit where credit is due. I certainly appreciate the mayor's efforts for growing and for his willingness to do that. And also to the HRC, who will take that opportunity to start having conversations that celebrate all of the cultures, because all of the cultures are to be celebrated. So I look forward to their next collaboration. They're actually collaborating with the Love and Unity Group that had an event at Edison. They're having a panel discussion tomorrow online, it's Zoom, so the Human Relations Commission page has that Zoom link. I encourage you all to join the conversation at that time, but just wanted to make sure that I did lift up the mayor, because it's a pretty lonely place to be when you're trying to do the right thing and not really trying to hurt anyone, but trying to be inclusive. These are really difficult and sensitive conversations, but we have to have them, because otherwise, we're going to be stuck in the same space that we've been for so long. And for those of us who are people of color, who are not of European or, you know, born in this country, it's necessary. So thank you, Mayor, for that courageous step forward and moving our township in the right direction. I do want to also give kudos to Mr. Gross and the administration. The audit came back once again with no recommendations, no corrective action plans. So I know that that is a lot of work, there's a lot of departments. I think the only corrective action plan that we were on is when one department spent without sharing a PO, you know, but that was easily corrected. And I also want to take this opportunity to say, I see a lot of comments on social media about how we do this to get rich, far from the truth. And following that is also, where does our money go? It's all right here. It's here, in all of these pages, our debt, our bonds, everything is in here, and this is also online. I encourage you, it's not the best or the most exciting way to spend your time, but it certainly is, this is where the money is, this is where it goes, this is where it is. And I really just wanted to share that with everyone, because, you know, we hear a lot of things on social media that are not true, for a lot of different reasons. So thank you, Mr. Gross, for seeing us through another year with zero recommendations or corrective action plans. Kudos to you and your office and the administration for that. Yes, absolutely. And also...
If I might just add to that, and I know you did talk about the fact that this was the effort of everyone, and I just wanted to echo what you've said and thank each and every member of the township staff. You know, it's not just those that even touch money, it's just process and procedure and caring enough about either why we do things, or even if we're just that it needs to be done, and that's part of the system. You know, we have an incredibly dedicated staff, and there's no better way to exemplify that than to look at an audit two years in a row without having any comments or recommendations from the auditor is just superb. It's just really a testament to everybody in the organization, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to publicly thank them for, you know, making this work. It is a collective effort, and really, this just proves that everybody is working hard to try to do the right thing for the taxpayers of the town. So I just wanted to make that comment.
I agree, and I want to thank everybody also, along with you. They're doing a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Sayers, Mr. Gross. I'm sure that that is very appreciated by all of our staff at Town Hall. So I was very excited to spend my Sunday reading through the audit. I also want to thank my council colleagues. During the meeting with the West Orange residents who were displaced from 275, I committed to them that we each would, yeah, I would divide the families up and assign each one of us as direct contacts to them so that we can advocate for them. I know that your plates are already full, but I'm sure if you've spoken to any of those residents, how appreciative they are of phone calls, the emotions, the despair, the fear, but that reassurance that you're giving them with the phone calls, just to check in and say, you know, "How are you doing?", you know, is really important. I also want to thank all of the volunteers who are Realtors in town, who are working with our residents. Some of my families have already found a place to live. I think when I checked in with Laura Friday, there were 15% of the families, I believe that's 15, right, Mr. Gross, who have found apartments and move-in dates for November 1st, November 15th. You know, it's challenging because there's not a lot out there, but, you know, they are willing, unfortunately, and will have to look outside of the township to find homes to call their own. But I want to say thank you to all of the volunteers, thank you to my council colleagues. I'm sure that Laura, who's doing an amazing job, Laura Van Dyke, she's taking care of all of the senior citizens and finding senior citizen placements for them, is relieved with the help that we've been able to provide her. I also want to say, I am incredibly grateful for the community that we live in, because the GoFundMe page that I asked Jonathan Redwine, who's also a resident here in town, to start, raised in about a week's time, $7,350. And we bought gift cards to Shop Right for all the families, because there is a need for toiletries and all of the other, you know, they have a hot buffet bar there. The residents did not, were not comfortable, I completely understand, because of COVID, accepting the trays from the restaurants, even though the restaurants have offered. So this was the solution where they can buy groceries. Some families are in hotels that have efficiency units, so they can cook, but others that don't have that are spending money buying meals three times a day for their entire family. So you can imagine a gift card of $50 per person goes by very fast. And I will also, very special thank you to a resident in Llewellyn Park, Mitch Kojan, who I had lunch with today. We spoke last week, and he gave me a check of $4,400, to be able to give each family a $100 gift card to Shop Right. I am beyond, I can get a bit emotional over it, because so many people care, and it's wonderful. And it's so needed for them, because even though it is true that the rent, the landlord did, you know, reimburse the October and the security, and gave them some money to move their items, they'll have to move again, right? So the move from out of there first into a storage facility, you know, when you add up the lock and security, it's $300 of unexpected expensive, $1,200 to move, and they'll have to do it all over again when they find a place to live. So I'm going to also echo all of my colleagues' sentiments to please continue to donate. The mayor's fund is becoming depleted, it is paying for the stay, and for those who have commented and continue to comment, why isn't the landlord paying for this? That's not our perspective, and that's not our position at this time. These are our neighbors and our friends. Until the time that there is some accountability with respect to the neighbor, I mean, to the landlord, or additional accountability for the landlord, we have to be a community of people who care. So that is why, that's the why. And it is quite expensive, but thank you to those who continue to support and donate. I think that is all. Thank you, Councilman Rutherford, for the early voting. It was a breeze. I really, I was excited to be able to go to the Education Center at South Mountain Reservation at the arena, and what a smooth, smooth operation. It's iPad and privacy sleeves and, you know, so please, if you have not voted yet and you want to vote early, anyone in Essex County can go to any of the polling locations that are in Essex County to vote. And the mayor also sent out a robo-call this morning to remind residents of that. So please be sure to take advantage. This is new to New Jersey, very excited for all of the avenues that New Jersey is exploring and has successfully provided to our community when we look at surrounding states that are working in the opposite direction to suppress the vote. We're very fortunate here in New Jersey. And with that, I will shut up. It is 7:02, Madam Clerk.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 30, 2020, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 10, 2020. Councilwoman Castellino? Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
Council President Mathieu Brown?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now we are at the moment of public comment. For those who want to participate in public comment, please raise your hand. You do not have to wait for someone to finish speaking. Please raise your hand and get in the queue, and our Madam Moderator will allow you to speak. Madam Moderator, do we have the time?
Yes.
Yes, I do have a timer. Let me work on that. Joe Fagan is first up.
Okay, just a reminder also for the residents who are going to speak, please state your name and your address and you will have five minutes to speak. Mr. Fagan, hello?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and a good rainy evening to you, Madam President, and your council colleagues and all members of the administration in attendance. I'm Joe Fagan, Public Information Officer, and thank you for the opportunity to briefly address the West Orange public this evening. It seems that every day these days has a special designation. Some are just plain silly, which takes away from those that are really significant in terms of meaning. Today is one of those meaningful days as October 26th marks the National Day of the Deployed. Of course, this is referring to those who are away from their families and serving our country in the military. This day was first observed in 2006 and by 2012, every state in the country recognized the importance of this day. It sets aside a special time for us to reflect upon those who are serving to keep us safe, but more importantly, the sacrifice their families must endure by their loved ones' absence. Several members of our West Orange community are currently serving on active duty and let us take the time to remember them and their families this day. To that point, there are two resolutions on the agenda this evening for the naming of two West Orange municipal parking lots. One in particular is highly appropriate for the National Day of the Deployed. Resolution 27-21 for the naming of the parking lot on Lindsay Avenue for Gordon Hanson. He was a West Orange resident who was deployed during World War II and was killed in action on March 20th, 1945, only weeks before the surrender of Germany. He was only 20 years old. Growing up, Hanson often played in the Lindsay Avenue neighborhood near the parking lot that could bear his name. All his papers and documents, including his Bronze Star and Purple Heart, were recently returned to my guardianship after 70-plus years in exile. They came from North Carolina from the son of Hanson's former fiancee, who had moved away and no one knew about their existence until now. I have since placed his World War II medals on display at West Orange Town Hall. The other resolution is for the naming of a municipal parking lot in Pleasantale after the Goldman family. They once operated a hotel in a nine-hole golf course just a short distance away. They were also instrumental in the founding of the first Hebrew school and Jewish center and synagogue in West Orange. The Pleasantale section today owes a deep debt of gratitude to them for the many sacrifices and vision in helping us to remember the proud heritage of our Jewish brothers and sisters today. Finally, I would like to wish one lifelong West Orange resident a happy 100th birthday. I'm referring to my late father, James Fagan Jr., who was born this day in 1921. He passed away in 2003, but forever lives in the heart of all those who knew him. Happy birthday, Dad, and to all those celebrating a birthday today. Thank you, Madam President. Those, this concludes my remarks for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan. Madam Moderator, who is next?
Yes. We have Love Gaylord up.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record. Ms. Gaylord?
She was there a second ago.
Yeah, I still see her there.
It jumped, it automatically went back into mute, but I'm back.
Okay, great. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure, my name is Love Gaylord. I reside at 31 Park Drive North here in town, West Orange. First, I want to jump on the gentleman's statement. I want to give honor to the soldiers that are currently serving and those that are retired. My father is a retired Army veteran and currently in the care of the Lyons Veterans Facility. And they are doing a stellar job. They restored my father's life and he's doing great. So that just gave me, you know, goose pimples to talk about the soldiers current and retired and still living. I wanted to come tonight to thank the, the council for hearing me out last week, last month. Month went by really quickly. You heard me and then you reflected my concerns and I felt that you really cared. Since then, I called the town, what do you call it? I think Works, Public Works, and I asked for some sandbags because my drain is still clogged up. So that's still an outstanding issue there, where I did have my personal drain on my property snaked and it seems, according to that person, it seems like there's a deeper problem. And I'm still waiting on Public Works to come out and do an investigation to see what needs to be done. If it's my responsibility or if some way I can partner with the township, that's an issue. Even last night, it puddled until this morning where it finally went down and the sandbags saved my garage from being flooded again. I evacuated all my things from the garage and the basement, wondering, you know, if there's going to be heavier rains or if the Llewellyn thing was going to happen again. As you all know, that's tremendously nerve-wracking. I, I lost sleep. A lot of people lost sleep. I didn't sleep until about 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning, listening. Mr. Laporte, I just sent an email to the council. Mr. Laporte did respond around 11 o'clock PM and said that if anything gets worse, to call the police and someone would be on call to assist me. So I thank you for that as well. And so my question, one is, I need someone to come out to investigate why the drain is clogged and is slow for the first time ever. Please, let's collaborate as neighbors. You know, you all are not just service workers for me. We're neighbors, you know, we are neighbors. So could one of my neighbors come and help investigate that? And the other thing is the Llewellyn Park issue, the partnership between Llewellyn Park's upkeep and maintenance with the partnership with the West Orange in the, the area of that brook that overflows. And as we know, both parties always say, oh, it's because it has debris, it's dirty. I think it's deeper than that because then I guess it's dirty all the time. So if this is an ongoing issue where they can't predict when the rain is going to come and when it needs to be clean, can we please have some type of engineering project set in place so that that raging water doesn't come out and break down our property that's causing hundreds of thousands of dollars in damage? I'm up to about $100,000 for this one and I was at $50,000 for the one in 2018, where I owe $50,000 to the SBA disaster right now and I may owe them another $50,000, which will be $100,000 in debt on top of school, college debt and my regular life. It's a lot to think about and I would hope that my neighbors, West Orange and Llewellyn Park, can come up with something to help reroute that water stream so it does not come our way. Like I said, we're between the wall and Llewellyn Park. If it comes to our side right at the wall, then reroute it so it goes on the other side of the wall because the other side of the wall is a street and would take it out to the main street on Eagle Rock. It's just a slight movement of direction of the water from what I see. And I'm not an engineer, but it's right along the wall where the water comes from. It comes along my property and everyone's property on that side. So I'm asking again, could you all please consider your neighbor? And not just me, I have several neighbors who haven't spoken up yet whose properties are damaged every couple of years because of this problem. And we just cannot allow it to keep happening because then I would have to move from West Orange because I can't stay in a property that continues to get damaged, causing me to be further in debt where my house is up in value. But it might not be because it keeps getting hit with floods, so it's depreciating my house's value as well. Who would want to buy a house who's prone to flooding and you can see it? So I thought about that too, and I thought about selling my house. It may not be as high as the other houses on my street. So there's a lot of concerns I have, as you can hear, but the main two things is please, a neighbor, please come check on my drain and please work. I'm asking you, what's the update on the plan for that water source in Llewellyn Park? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gaylord.
Next up, we have Joseph Krkowiak.
Can we adjust the timer before Mr. Krkowiak? Thank you.
Joe Krkowiak, Grandview Avenue. Good evening. Thanks for posting the current supplemental debt statement to the town finance document webpage. And this is a question I request each council member to answer if they would. We request that the administration post all future supplemental debt statements to the township website on the date they are prepared, rather than two weeks after they are created, as this one was. The, moving on, the SDS shows that if the council passes the free bonding ordinance, is totaling $22 million tonight, that the township's issued and authorized debt will rise to $151 million. That's up $71 million or 89% in less than three years. These are two questions I request each council person to answer if they would. Are you concerned about this level of borrowing? Why or why not? And how do you expect payment of interest and repayment of borrowings to impact the budget and property taxes over the next five years? Moving on, given the recent surge in debt authorizations, I think it's imperative that council members take a harder line at adding more debt. Certainly until you have a detailed plan protecting how we're going to pay for it. In that light, I ask you to vote down the $7 million for downtown redevelopment property purchases and the $14.5 million capital bonding. The properties are not owned by Prism, so they shouldn't be trouble for the new redevelopers to acquire. I ask that you review the capital budget and only approve the most must-haves and then direct the administration to submit a revised lower bond ordinance. Relative to 275 Northfield, what role does the township have in that situation going forward? Does the township have any potential liability, legal liability? And if so, what is that liability? And this is a question I, I request each council person to answer. Do you support a full investigation of how the rock slide occurred in the potential for further danger, not just on 275 Northfield, but also adjacent areas, including the Seton Hall Prep Kelly Athletic Center property? And I do support such an investigation. I have a couple of questions from previous council meetings that haven't been answered yet. On Resolution 261-21, which was relative to the downtown redevelopment properties, Exhibit A shows 20 Ashland Avenue. Public records show the assessment of $35,900 and a Prism purchase in 2007 of $398,250. And my questions are, are these values correct? And if so, do you know any reason why the assessment is less than 10% of the 2007 market value? Also, what is the current appraised value? Moving on, what is the status of Prism's contractual promise to build affordable housing required in Phase 1? The council majority allowed Prism to move to Phase 2. Seems to me the township has a huge potential multimillion dollar claim against Prism and its partners for getting the benefit of building market rate units in Phase 1 without having to pay for affordable housing. I'd like to know what the status of that is and what the council members think is going to happen with that property. The last meeting, Council President noted that she was challenged to take sufficient notes of my questions. At several earlier council meetings, I had emailed my questions to council members to help them with potentially answering them. But it doesn't look like people are looking at them and Councilwoman McCartney even said that she wouldn't look at them in any case. Would you like me to resume sending you my questions? For a long time, each council meeting featured Business Administrator Sayers giving an update on what was happening with downtown redevelopment. It seems to have ended and the entry no longer listed on the agenda. Who decided to no longer have this regular update and why? Is the intention that it's gone for good or is there any plan to bring it back in the near future? I respectfully request to return to this agenda item immediately. While on the subject, what is the status of finding a substitute redeveloper of the lawsuit and the pending settlement of the appraisals of the properties and of plans to build a media studio there? Resolution 270-21 extending the management contract for the Environmental Center. The 2019 contract cut the lease payment to the township in half. I request the council vote this resolution down and direct the administration to revise the contract specifications to make the contract more attractive, hopefully attract more people who would come to a competitive bidding situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Paul Hanson. Paul, are you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Paul Hanson. I live at 11941 Hillside Drive here in Anchorage, Alaska. And this is where I live. I would like to speak in support of the resolution submitted by Joe Fagan to name a municipal parking lot after Gordon Hanson. Some of this information that I've written has already been stated by Joe, so you'll bear with me. My sisters, brother and I, the four of us grew up on Birchwood Avenue in St. Cloud. Three of us graduated from West Orange High School. Gordon Hanson was my father's first cousin. Gordon was killed in World War II. I never met him as I was born a year after his death. Gordon grew up on Valley Way in West Orange and graduated from West Orange High School, class of 1942, seven months after Pearl Harbor. Like many others, Gordon joined the army and he did so one year later at age 18. During the next two years, he fought in France and Germany, earning the Bronze Stare, a star for bravery. Sadly, he was killed in March 1945 at age 20, only seven weeks before the Germans surrender. He was the only child of my great uncle and aunt, Ingol and Thora Hanson. Gordon is buried in France at Lorraine American Cemetery along with 10,480 other Americans. Until recently, little was known about Gordon's army service in World War II. Joe Fagan came into possession of unknown family documents about Gordon that had been kept by his fiancee for some fifth years. These included army records, letters, photos, and newspaper clippings, as well as his medals. Joe plans to safeguard these items and to put them on display in the new West Orange library. My sisters and I appreciate and applaud Joe's efforts to honor Gordon with this resolution. We met with Joe three weeks ago. He had created a book with copies of the documents, as well as a timeline and narrative about Gordon's short life. Really, you should all see the book. It's very impressive. We are grateful to Joe. We're grateful to have this book and to learn much more about Gordon. And that's about it. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
Next up is Jackie Chetel.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jackie Chetel. I live at 44 Buckingham Road in West Orange. I just wanted to say on behalf of the Goldman family, we'd like to thank everybody for bestowing the honor of renaming the parking lot after the Goldens. West Orange has been a very big part of our lives for a very long time and we're very grateful for this honor. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jackie.
You're welcome.
Next up is Claire Sylvester.
Good evening. Claire Sylvester, 20 Grandview Avenue. When I spoke at the, when I spoke last at the September 14th council meeting, I urged the council to vote down the ordinance to bond $13 million for the acquisition of the Prism-owned properties in the Phase 2 area of Edison Redevelopment. My reasons were many, not the least of which was that no town hall sessions or workshops had been held to allow residents the opportunity to get information, have their questions answered and provide input into the process. There appeared to be a great deal of urgency for the council to pass the ordinance that night so the township could settle Prism's lawsuit before the end of the year. But in the mayor's presentation, he made it clear that there was not yet a real plan formulated for Phase 2 and there would be additional public discussions planned in the coming months for residents to be informed and to weigh in. Yet here we are again, only six weeks later. And the council is being asked to vote on second and final reading tonight to approve an additional $7 million in bonding, earmarked for acquisition of all the other properties in the Phase 2 redevelopment zone. I'm dumbfounded that the council is poised to approve another multimillion dollar expenditure of taxpayer funds without providing the public with a reasonable opportunity to learn more about this highly unusual course of action. I remind council members that all of you indicated back in July, when this was first discussed, that there would be plenty of time and opportunities for residents to get information, have their questions answered and provide input. We are now talking about an astounding total of $20 million that the mayor wants us to sink into Phase 2 properties. So again, I request you hold off on approving any further bothering, borrowing, I'm sorry, for Phase 2 properties until public information sessions are held. Also, I wanted to express concern about the status of the property on and around the condemned apartments on Northfield Avenue. Also, I wanted to express concern about the status of the property on and around the condemned apartments on Northfield Avenue. The article that was the lead story in Sunday Star Ledger's New Jersey section raised more questions than it answered. It was not at all a good look for the township to have no one but senior services coordinator Laura Van Dyke, who by the way is doing a great job, but she was the only one to get back to or answer any of the reporters' questions. Based on the scope of this story, it's clear the reporter spent a number of days on the piece. So I can't imagine why no one from the township was able to provide any sort of answers or at least some kind of statement to the reporter before his deadline. This type of nonresponsiveness from our town officials can often lead to suspicion and speculation on the part of the public. It's no wonder people are calling for an investigation. Not only have forty-four West Orange families been displaced from their homes, but the long-term safety of other homes sitting below the ridge, as well as the athletic facilities sitting on top of it, have now been called into question. I ask the town administration to please be more transparent on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Fred, Frank Ballastier. Frank, are you there? He should be. There you go.
Hi, please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Frank Ballastier. I'm present at two seventy-five St. Cloud Avenue.
Thank you. Go ahead. Can you start the timer?
All right. Thank you for allowing me the chance to speak tonight. My name is Frank Ballastier. I've been a West Orange firefighter for sixteen years. I was born, I was born in Orange when I was six. My family moved to West Orange where I was raised in the valley. I love this town and have dedicated my life to it. On October fifteenth, I, along with six other brother firefighters, were placed on unpaid leave because of our vaccination status. No opportunity for testing or continuing to be stationed on engine three, where I continue to wear a mask and social distance. I continued this process while continuing to do my job. I find it unconscionable to mandate injections without exemption, especially when the injection is a brand-new medical product, still undergoing its first year of study. The safety and effectiveness of this vaccine has not been proven. There are other safe and alternative treatments. It is impossible to give fully informed consent without long-term unbiased data. Threatening our jobs is blatant coercion. Our God-given right to bodily integrity and personal autonomy has been stripped with these mandates and is unacceptable in my eyes. Transmission rates in town and New Jersey as whole continue to drop. I am not an anti-vaxxer or anti-mask. I want people to be comfortable with me while staying comfortable with my choices in life. I got COVID November fifteenth, twenty twenty, and thank God, recovered from it like so many other people have. God blessed me with antibodies and my own natural immunity in this fight against COVID. I continue to get monthly antibody testing, and after eleven months, I still maintain antibodies. I ask you tonight to reconsider my unpaid leave and continue the job I love and the job me and my fellow seven brother firefighters have done our whole career without question. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Next up is Lori Abrams.
Good evening. My name is Lori Abrams. I live at one thirty-nine Mitchell Street. I want to echo Joe Krokoviek and Claire Silvestri's comments and questions and requests, particularly around the gross expenditures the council may be committing to on behalf of we West Orange residents. We cannot do anything about the ill-conceived, ill-executed Edison project as it stands today, but we can pause and think hard before committing to additional expenditures that are guaranteed to increase already unaffordable taxes that increase year after year after year. As far as I know, we've received no information about how, excuse me, how these new expenditures will impact our taxes on an individual basis and what amazing services we will receive to offset these expenses so that, so that we can continue to live here. So I add my voice to those of the others and request that you put off decisions about taking on more debt on our behalf until there's more public information. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Tez Roro.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Good evening, Ms. Roro.
Good evening. My name is Tez Roro. My address is twenty-four Hutton. First, I want to say thank you to Councilwoman Cindy Muto Brown and everyone else who's working on helping our displaced families. I happen to be a real special, so I'm trying to do my part to help as well. A suggestion I have is, and I have called the town as well, they probably didn't get a chance to get back to me, is if we can somehow make this search a little bit more targeted, right? So without sharing personal information, if there could be some type of spreadsheet or something of, you know, this is the need and the area and the budget and stuff like that. I don't need to know names or anything like that. It would help me on a personal level be a little bit more targeted as opposed to kind of throwing. I got a call from a gentleman today, for example, I'm having the same conversations, right? Budget and stuff like that. So if you can give that some thought to see if there's a way to make sense without, you know, keeping, you know, with keeping confidentiality, that's one. The other comment I have is considering that New Jersey now has early voting. I too voted today. It's a very good experience, very streamlined, very high-tech as well. I felt secure that I got to scan my own ballot and all that good stuff. I'm wondering if the town can do some type of like a shuttle service for those who may have transportation issues and if we can make voting accessible that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roro.
Any other members of the public want to speak before we have Anthony Puglisi? Not seeing any. Oh, Jonathan Sharet.
Can we restart the clock for Jonathan, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Hello, Jonathan. Hi, thank you. This is Jonathan Sharet, eleven Howell Drive here in town.
Hi.
I just wanted to thank the council for all their hard work on behalf of all the residents, especially the tragedy on Northfield. I think your efforts are above and beyond, and I really wanted to express my thanks for that. I also wanted to add my voice, I guess, to the, to the questions regarding the bond ordinance. I'm sure that there's a good plan in place, and I'm sure that a lot of thought has gone into this. I just ask that some of that, you know, as much as possible can be shared with the township so that the public can be informed as to why the bond ordinances are necessary, why the town should take on this debt. There's a lot of information, you know, being circulated on social media. It's hard to know how much information is true and what residents should be taking away from these social media posts, you know, some of which are, you know, from various members of the public and may not, you know, be accurate. And with so much debt, you know, being taken on, it looks like from the public statements, I think where the town would be taking on a total of about a hundred and fifty million dollars of debt. I mean, that's a scary number, and I think it behooves the council to provide, you know, assurances to the township that the money is being borrowed for a good reason and going to be spent for good reasons. And with that, I'll close my statement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members would like to speak? Not seeing anyone else. Anthony Puglisi, you're up.
Good evening. This is Anthony Puglisi, representing, representing County Executive Jody Fincenzo. Just have a brief list of upcoming events. On Sunday, October thirty-first, at five o'clock is our Halloween event at Turtle Bag Zoo. That's a trick-or-treating, safe trick-or-treating throughout the zoo rounds. November thirteenth, from eight AM to twelve noon in Cedar Grove at our Public Works facility on Bradford Avenue. We're going to have our paper shredding and tire recycling fall event. And then, of course, coming in November, mid-November, we'll resume the Holiday Light Spectacular, which was postponed last year because of the pandemic. All of this is or will be on the county website, which is EssexCountyNJ.org, and I hope everyone has a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Puglisi. Madam moderator, is anyone else? This is the last call for anyone who would like to speak before we close public comments.
Not seeing anyone.
Okay, we are closing public comment at this time. Thanking everyone for their comments and I will get to my first page of notes. Joe, I know I typically skip you. I'm so sorry, but did want to acknowledge your efforts in reaching out to the family of Mr. Hanson with respect to sharing, creating and sharing that book of timelines of his life. That's pretty remarkable. But I'm not surprised, knowing who you are and what you represent and where your pride stands. So I certainly wanted to acknowledge you and say thank you for those efforts. And to Mr. Hanson, thank you for joining us from Anchorage. This is really exciting for us as well to learn the history of a resident to have such great impact to ensure that we're enjoying all of the rights and privileges that we do today. So thank you for sharing your story and look forward to that resolution, supporting that resolution, naming the lot after your, I believe you said that was your, Mr. Gordon is your father's cousin. So certainly thank you for sharing from a family perspective. Ms. Galyard, I'm sorry, I'm pronouncing your, mispronouncing your last name. I really apologize. Mr. Lapore, are you here with us today? I'm not sure if he is on. I would like Mr. Lapore to just give us an update. I know that the last conversation we had had to do with his conversations with the mayor and talking about having an engineer come out and create a plan. Hi, Mr. Lapore.
I did hear Ms. Galyard's comments and I did hear your questions. An engineer, Carl Jenny, who was instrumental in doing stormwater and roadway and sanitary sewer improvements in the Welland Park will be meeting with me this Friday morning.
Wonderful. Are any of my council colleagues or myself available? Are we able to join you on that?
You certainly are. I will get you a time and location, and I can provide that for you tomorrow or Thursday.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I learned so much from meeting you at places where residents have concerns. So that's why I asked. I don't know if any of my other council colleagues have taken advantage of that opportunity, but you know, I can look at a tree today and see, you know, where that knot is at the bottom and say, oh yeah, that looks like it's a... So I really appreciate the opportunity.
She also had a question about the cleaning of her drain.
Yes.
Unfortunately, our sewer supervisor has been out on a personal matter the past couple of weeks, but as soon as he returns, we'll be out there.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lapore. Okay, let me just see before I get to Jackie Chetel. Thank you for joining us. Looking forward to also supporting the resolution that names, renames the lot in your family's name. I'm sure the contributions are many and certainly appreciate all of our residents in town, but this is often a special time for families. So look forward to supporting that and thank you for coming on. Let's see. There's so much. Ms. Roro, thank you for your suggestions with respect to a spreadsheet. I'm going to be honest, it's just really difficult logistically to get everybody's information with respect to their income. Sometimes that's a very delicate discussion and some are just not happy or comfortable sharing that. That's why I thought, you know, working one-on-one with those realtors who can and have had that experience, be more comfortable for them. And I can try to work with my families, but it's challenging with time and just really bandwidth for us. So the call-out was to be able to kind of help us balance that contact with them as well, but I think that if we can, certainly we'll put something together for you. And really excited about the early voting and the shuttle, the suggestion of the shuttle, I think would depend on availability of the shuttle, depending on the days and the schedules, because we do have a limited number of shuttles. But I do think, and I know that you're very active in the community. I'll put this back on your lap. There are some programs that either of the car services, whether it be Uber or even for the, there's one for senior citizens, Go Daddy, I think it's called. But they do often around this election time work to coordinate with those to drive them to voting sites. So if you look into that and bring back some information, be happy to support you in that effort as well. But thank you for sharing that information, and I'm sure the administration says that there is capacity to do that as far as availability of vans and routes and things. That's a great idea. I just want to make sure that I answer everyone else before I get to some of the questions that everyone had with respect to the downtown redevelopment and then addressing the, our firefighter who spoke. Okay. Mr. Krokoviek, you asked if we can make sure or ask the administration to post the debt statement the day it is prepared. I think that they do it within the capacity with which they have. As you know, there are very limited support staff in town hall and they can get to it as soon as they can. So while, let's say, Mr. Gross may prepare and have it ready to be posted, that does have to go to IT and we don't know sometimes they're, you know, otherwise occupied. So no, I'm not going to ask that they do it on the same day, but we have asked during the last council meeting that they make sure to share it on the website as soon as possible. I think that's very reasonable. There isn't a lack of wanting to share. It's just, I'm not going to ask them to do it the same day. I think that that's, as soon as possible is very reasonable. Let's see, what else do you ask? The role of the township, I'm not going to answer your question with respect to whether or not I feel that there's any liability. I've had conversations with the administration and shared some questions with them. That is a matter of discussion that the council and I will have under new business. The state of affordable housing, it will, obviously, if, since we have settled and Mr. Trank, I just saw you pop back on. If you want to speak to that, that would be good. Trying to find your unmute. You're still muted.
Sorry about that. Yes, you're absolutely right, Council President. The settlement agreement is a global settlement. And obviously, as we move into this next phase of finalizing the settlement agreement and consummating it, clearly, we're well aware of the affordable housing obligation and will take that into account as we continue our discussions as to presenting a new redevelopment development project. So that will definitely, that will definitely, that was all baked into the settlement and that will, after the closing, be the township in regard to the new redevelopment's obligation to address.
Thank you. I did just want to say, before I answer the rest of Mr. Krokoviek's question, Mr. Krokoviek, you did ask the council, in addition to voting down the seven million for the acquisition of the other downtown redevelopment properties, you also asked the council to vote down the fourteen million capital. you also asked the council to vote down the fourteen million capital, capital improvement budget. And you asked us to go through it and give it back to the administration so they can come back with something differently. You, as you, I don't know how many of those who are listening are aware, Council, Joe Krikorviak is a former council member. And in my tenure, and this is only my third year on the council, first time ever as an elected official, but in my tenure with Mr. Krikorviak, we have had budget hearings that have exceeded thirteen hours the first time and nine hours the second time, and there is still no fat to be cut. So to ask the township to, the council to vote down fourteen million dollars and give it back to the administration to come back with something else, I think is, A, is very presumptuous in thinking that we do not understand what the parameters of the capital budget are. There will be a presentation of the capital improvement budget expenses and its allotment, as there always is, that will be held at the time of second reading, because it is on for second reading. So we will discuss that at that time. And you know that the administration Town Hall functions on a very, very skeleton crew. I know that the mayor likes to say he likes to do more with less and we can do. I don't always agree with that. But, you know, we've nickled and dimed this capital improvement budget in the past to death and haven't made one iota of movement. When we're thinking about infrastructure, it is really important for us to make sure that we are focusing on that, because as everyone has experienced, especially with IDA, especially with the crisis of what is climate change, we've got infrastructure that's over fifty years old that is in desperate need of upgrading. So when we allot monies in the capital improvement budget, it is to take care of those things that we cannot allow to fall apart too much longer. So with respect to the fourteen million dollars, during the hearing, you can address us again at that time and make your suggestions of what you think we should cut from that budget. With respect to the role of the township, does the township have liability? I said I'm not going to answer that. The role of the township is to take care of the residents in that situation. And once that priority is taken care of, we'll move on from there and I'm sure that there will be updates from the administration at that time. The fact that there is no longer the affordable, I'm sorry, the redevelopment update from Mr. Sayers on the agenda, as you well know as well, council president set the agenda. I chose not to include that on the agenda, because it takes a lot of time to ask repetitive questions and then the council colleague does not have time, colleagues do not have time to get through their council liaison appointments. When there is changes in redevelopment, then that will be shared, but I just didn't think that that was something that I, as council president, wanted to keep on the agenda. So perhaps if whoever is council president next, if they want to bring that back, I'm sure they will at that time. And then you also talked about whether or not you wanted every council member to answer the question whether or not we were concerned with the debt. I think that that is a rhetorical question. Of course we are. How are we going to pay for it? I've seen some of your public posts with respect to language, particular language, that colorful language that you like to use about it being explosive and exploding spending spree. It's not. I think that it's really important for everyone to understand that as elected officials, you have elected us to make some decisions that aren't always the easiest decisions to make. We all want a downtown and the way it is presently constituted, it is not possible to have the downtown that mimics a Montclair or South Orange Maplewood or Summit, wherever it is that we go to have dinner. It's just not possible. The reason we are pushing to acquire additional properties is so that we can reimagine a downtown. Councilman Rutherford, who you supported throughout his campaign, this was what he campaigned on, reimagining a downtown. We are taking very bold moves to do that and as soon as there is finalization of this and we will continue to have this conversation under new matters with my council colleagues, because there is an ask that I have, it will be done. But I know that Mr. Sharet, you asked that you hope that we were, we would be able to provide assurances that the money is being borrowed for good reasons and I assure you, they are. We can't keep saying that we want a downtown and not make an investment in our community. It is an investment. The growing debt service that we have will be decreased. Once we apply for the Green Acres funding for Rock Spring, that is still in part of what there is for us to do. And why haven't we applied for that yet is simply because we don't have a plan for a Rock Spring yet. But to your point, when you ring the bell of alarm with respect to they're going to take all of these properties off of the tax revenue rosters, equalling, initially you said three hundred seventy-five, now you're saying over five hundred, you were quite comfortable taking the Rock Spring six hundred thousand dollar revenue off the table permanently. So I'm really confused by what your positions are or the agenda behind you ringing these alarms. As you know, we pay down debt annually and will continue to do that. And I just want to say lastly, that while there isn't a plan yet, the plan is to reimagine downtown and that's, that's why the funding, that's why the need. And I'll move on to Ms. Silvestri's question with respect to the sense of urgency that, yes, we did initially start out saying that we will have the time to do a presentation when we were trying to purchase the Prism redevelopment lots. But as you know, because you did share it extensively on social media, we were engaged in a lawsuit. And that lawsuit led to a judge in the Superior Court ordering a settlement conference. And that settlement conference gave us a timeline and we abided by that timeline. We were able to settle, now we're waiting for the closing. I do expect and will ask my council colleagues to support having a charrette once this is all said and done, so that the voices of the township and the community are heard, are part of the discussion as we move forward in designing and development, the downtown, developing the downtown that we want. So there is no unusual course of action. It's just this particular circumstance, because of the lawsuit, kept us from engaging as we have in the past, the community, but certainly look forward to doing so. Ms. Silvestri, your comments with respect to the article and how it made us look, I think that it's fair for me to say that the mayor gave, before our meeting at Willshire Grand, before ABC aired anything, the mayor gave five or six interviews with different social media outlets. And as we know, we are not, you know, we can't control what they say. I thought the meeting at Willshire Grand was really informative. It was very empathetic to the residents, because that's what we were there to do. We were there to give them resources and services. And we all heard, my council colleagues and the residents that were there, all of the things that the mayor did say and what you heard the public the next morning was, the mayor apologizes because there's another blow to the residents. It was so much more than that. So I'm just going to say that we can take articles or social media posts or news with a grain of salt, because at the end of the day, and I am far from that individual to ever say fake news, but at the end of the day, these are businesses, you know, and they make money. So there are discussions that we will have with regards to what happens next and that I'll have under new business with my council colleagues. And I think the fire, the West Orange firefighter who spoke, Frank Alastair, I want to have that conversation with my council colleagues as well, so I'm going to address that shortly. And Ms. Abrams, I hope that you can understand that we will have public engagement as soon as we are able to close on these properties. And I also lastly want to remind everyone, you know, everyone wants things to be done differently. We are doing them differently. When I look at the county executive, when I look at McLunes, the county executive still owns that land. I'm sorry, no, that's, yeah, it is county property and they have a long-term lease. So there are things that we're thinking about, that we're exploring, that benefits the township. Each one of these elected officials, each one of us also live here, also pay taxes. And contrary to what those with political agendas to be your next mayor may say, we are not getting rich off of any deals. We spend a lot of time committed to doing the work, to doing the research, to talking amongst each other, to arguing amongst each other, to come to the best decision for our township. So I've taken far too much time, pardon me if I get passionate, but I just know the time and commitment that we all put in and I really get distressed when there's a lot of misinformation that's shared out there. And yes, the misinformation sometimes is also part of us not being able to have an open forum, but we will shortly, it is something that we look forward to doing. I will stop there and Councilwoman Casalino.
Thank you, Council President, just still getting, can I pass? Can I, can I go last? I'm still getting some notes together.
Sure. Woman McCartney. Councilwoman.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Councilwoman.
No, not, Michelle, that's okay, okay, go ahead, Councilwoman.
I wanted to commend you on your comments. Quite eloquent and very comprehensive. I wanted to start, head backwards, because I wanted to thank Anthony Puglisi for his comments. I've already received calls about the Holiday Light Spectacular, so glad to hear that that will be scheduled next month. And trick or treating, the safe trick or treating at the zoo is always so popular and the paper shred, as we know, is quite popular. So thank you, Joe, for all that the county does. And also to Joe Fagan, for, I did read his historical perspective on the Hanson family. The fact that he was only twenty years old and the fiance, it was just such a beautiful story. And I did have both of those resolutions, two seventy-two for the Goldman lot and also for the Hanson lot circled, not to pull, but to support and say that I really do like the idea of personalizing sites in town that have this historic value to it. So Jackie, congratulations for your family and all that has happened in West Orange, continues to happen here in West Orange. Always so forward-thinking as a family, as we see at the Willshire Grand, that property. And to Mr. Paul Hanson, calling in from Anchorage, Alaska. Here I'm saying that I appreciate it being so personal and I could not have been any more personal than to receive that call. And I did see Councilwoman Casalino kind of motion when you mentioned that Gordon Hanson grew up on Valley Way. So again, that historical perspective means so much to me and to all of us. So you know, I have your, the full support of supporting those resolutions. I wanted to say to love Galyard that when I heard the governor declare a state of emergency last night, I actually thought of her and her quaint home. So I was so pleased to see that the DPW came through with the sandbags and will continue to help her. We're doing so much for the families at two seventy-five Northfield. I would expect nothing less for us to help her. I do remember Carl Jennings from the LeWelland Park work that was done, so I'm glad to see that he can be involved again to assist her with that, with the drainage. And not just for her quaint home, for the other families on that street on Park Tribe North that may be affected. So I hope that we can work that out. Tez, you know, I know years past, we have had for Tez Roro, I wanted to say that we have had a shuttle service for seniors going to the different homes to get them to voting. Many of the voting is right there in our senior houses, but for others in town, we can see what the availability is like to coordinate that. And Council President, I agree with you about the spreadsheet, that is very personal data. I think that would be up to the residents themselves to speak to their realtors, not for us to provide that information. And as far as the redevelopment project, I mean, we know that is, it is a settlement agreement. Council, former Councilman Krikovjak and I, over the years, have always seemed to read from a different playbook, because I feel that the bonds that, just looking at some of the items on this list for, for the bonds and even for downtown, that I just believe in investing in our township. I want to invest in our township as an economic driver for future growth. So the things that are on this list are infrastructure, the slot improvements, information technology, we have to stay current with that, outdoor facilities, our playgrounds, road improvements. I don't know, I know we always go to know on our budgets, but if you could find something in there that you think that we should eliminate, we're always open to those type of suggestions, but the scenes, what's listed here seems to be pertinent and necessary to me. And I know that there was a comment about the COA obligations, the township has always complied with our affordable housing obligation, so that would go, that to me goes without saying, as we move forward with the downtown redevelopment project, that we would continue to comply. And Council President, you said it as well, that I know that there's always red flags raised about concern about the debt and there is another side of that ledger that never gets brought up or discussed, that we continue to pay down that debt. So yes, there is an increase in debt, but it does continue to get paid down. And I look forward to this conversation about Frank Bellistiri and our employees and what's happening with the mandate and the vaccine. I know we had a brief conversation, I did see the mandate come out. I too questioned it and was looking for testing options. I didn't know that that was going to be on pending matters, but if it is, I would like to further that discussion and look at medical and health accommodations and continue that, continue that. And for Mr. Sharet, same thing, comments about the debt. I appreciate your kind words about township and how we are moving forward and we continue to pay down our debt. And as Mr. Trank just said, there is a settlement agreement and at this closing, I too look forward to a workshop and the whole discussion on our plan moving forward. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President, to pick up where Councilwoman McCartney just left off. Not only do we pay down the debt annually, but I have also had conversation with our CFO regarding our plan to convert some of the short-term debt into longer-term debt and how we can prepare ourselves for what will happen at some point in the future, which is interest rates rising. So I am confident in his understanding of the balance sheet and his ability to convert some of that debt on an annual basis, understanding the impact to our overall budget. uh, understanding the impact to our overall budget, um, by making those changes. So I'm, I'm, uh, while, you know, Mr. Krakowiak has, uh, asked the question, are we concerned about the level of debt? Um, I am mildly concerned. I am not overly concerned. I know that may not be ple- a pleasing answer to some. Um, I am mildly concerned because, uh, if interest rates do move in the wrong direction quickly, it could certainly impact our, uh, budget. But, uh, given the size of the township, the, uh, the tax collection rate, uh, the size of our budget, um, and the expertise of our CFO so far, uh, I am not overly concerned that, uh, this level of debt, a hundred and fifty million or so is something that, uh, we need to, you know, raise the alarms about, at least at this point. Um, going back to the beginning of my notes, I just wanted to say that before I forgot it because I didn't write it down, uh, when Councilwoman McCartney was speaking. Um, going back to the beginning of the, uh, public comments, uh, Mr. Fagan, as always, thank you very much for your detailed, um, presentation, especially with regard to Mr. Uh, Hanson and, uh, uh, also alerting us to today being the day of the deployed. As a family who has many, uh, military members in it, um, who have been deployed, uh, even recently, uh, I am certainly, uh, I did not know that and I am certainly pleased to have had that announcement here tonight and to be educated on it myself. Uh, to Ms. Gayard, and I hope I said your name properly. I, I apologize if I didn't. Uh, certainly, um, we will continue to advocate for you. I think our, uh, Department of Public Works is on it. Um, and we will certainly continue to make sure that they stay on it, not just for you, but for the entire Park Drive North, uh, families, um, especially as it is now starting to rain outside. Uh, we know the damage that can be done by this rushing water down the hillside. Um, and this is an issue that is not going away. Um, we know that storms are getting bigger and more powerful, um, and they're getting wetter, meaning they're dropping more water per storm. Uh, so we certainly are aware of the issues that we have to deal with in West Orange and will be looking to take a proactive approach to mitigating some of these, uh, runoff issues, um, as well, which is part of the reason why many residents in town are advocating, uh, for the preservation of open space. Uh, these trees certainly do help, uh, with absorbing the water and keeping the land in place. Uh, hence the comment about open space and rec committee in our liaison, um, announcements earlier tonight. Mr. Krakowiak, um, I am happy to, uh, ask the administration to post the supplemental debt statement, uh, sooner than two weeks. Uh, I, I don't know that I would want to, uh, say the same day that it's prepared, uh, but you know, certainly within a reasonable time and that would be, uh, maybe, you know, two, three, four days. I, I don't think that would be unheard of or unreasonable. Uh, but again, I think, um, those capacity constraints will be, uh, governing on that, you know, who can do what when. Uh, so while I'm happy to advocate for it, it's certainly not a function of the town council, as you know, to dictate when those kinds of things get posted, uh, on the website. I am going to defer my conversation or my comment on the investigation on the rock slide, uh, at two seventy-five Northfield until we have a fuller conversation, uh, later on this evening. Um, uh, but obviously I am, uh, you know, saddened and disheartened, uh, that it happened at all and looking to make sure that we, um, are proactive about protecting the other areas in town, uh, that are subject to similar conditions. Mr. Krakowiak's comment about twenty Ashland Avenue, uh, I think that is a valid question and I think it deserves some attention. I don't know if there's someone on, uh, tonight that can speak to that, um, but I would be happy to know why the assessed value is ten percent of the market value. And if that is accurate, I don't know that that's accurate, but, uh, if that is accurate, I would like to know why that is the case. The, there was one comment Mr. Krakowiak, uh, made that I did not, uh, catch in my notes, uh, with regard to a contract being made more attractive. If you could email that, that would be helpful. Uh, to Mr. Hanson and the Goldman family, I am excited about this opportunity to support the naming of the various parking lots. I think it is the exact right thing to do, uh, to honor those folks that have called West Orange home and made such an impact, uh, in and on our town. Just give me a second. Going to come back to Mr. Ballistiri in a second. Uh, I understand both Ms. Silvestri and Ms. Abrams', uh, questions, uh, regarding or, or, or concern regarding how quickly we are moving, uh, with regard to downtown. I think it's important for us to understand that, uh, downtown has looked the same probably, it's certainly looked the same the entire time I've been here, which is twenty years. Um, I've spoken to other residents that have been here since they were children and it's looked the same. And it is high time that we make a major investment with a bold plan to reimagine downtown. And that is exactly what we're doing. Now, the process may not be, um, what some others would like. I certainly understand that. Uh, but I hope that, um, y- you would have some confidence in your elected officials to represent your interests in those, in those meetings and in those discussions and as things move forward. We cannot always discuss things in public, especially when we don't have concrete information to provide because then we get put into a box and when people say, well, you said this last week or two weeks ago or last month, and now you're saying something different. So we, we cannot do that. And we certainly don't want to, um, put the cart before the horse, so to speak, and announce something that is not, uh, concrete or done. Um, and we don't want to, uh, put ourselves in a disadvantaged position when it comes to finding, uh, or su- or settling on the right plan for downtown. So, uh, some things have to, uh, proceed carefully and cautiously, uh, and that's exactly what I believe I'm doing. And I hope that you have, uh, the confidence in us to continue. And I understand that you may not. I know there are many that don't. Um, but in my conversations with, uh, residents, uh, I am encouraged by, uh, both their support for, uh, a new downtown as well as their confidence in, uh, the council to get this particular job done at this particular time. Ms. Roro had in, uh, a great, uh, suggestion regarding the spreadsheet. Uh, I will certainly, uh, c- continue to communicate with my council colleagues and then also ask those, uh, residents that I am, um, directly in contact with, uh, from two seventy-five Northfield, uh, to gauge their comfort level sharing information and, uh, certainly if they are comfortable, uh, sharing some information and we can make it easier to expedite, uh, finding, uh, the resources they need, I'd be all for that. And I think I've covered Mr. Sharet's comments, uh, already. Uh, thank you, Mr. Puglisi, as always, for providing a timely update. Uh, with regard to Mr. Ballistiri, um, we hear, the council hears your concerns and we are sympathetic to it. Um, what I want you to know, uh, is that, uh, the five of us have had a conversation just today. Each of us independently, uh, have expressed our, um, desire to, um, encourage the administration to reevaluate, uh, the decision that they've made in a way that keeps public health, uh, first and foremost, but also, uh, understands and takes into consideration the unique needs of our employees. And so we hear you loud and clear. Um, and we are willing to work, uh, with the administration to see what, if anything, can be done. We've not yet had an opportunity to have that conversation fully. So I don't speak too much about, uh, but I want you to understand that we do hear you loud and clear and, uh, we are looking to figure out a way to balance these various interests, uh, in a way that makes sense, uh, both for the public as well as our, uh, employees, especially our first responders who have already made a considerable sacrifice with regard to addressing the COVID situation, um, you know, since day one. Uh, and so we're not going to take that lightly, um, or just, you know, push that to the side now that we're, we're, we have a vaccine. Um, uh, but I do ask that you give us just a, a little bit more time so that we can fully flesh that out, uh, and hopefully, uh, find a, a, a better middle ground. Um, again, no guarantees can be made. Um, that concludes my comments. Um, I, I, I've seen some faces and some body language. So if there's some follow-up to that, I'm happy to, to hear it. Um, but, uh, that concludes my, my comments. Uh, Council President, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford. Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, Mr. Fagan, Mr. Puglisi, thank you so much for giving us information on the township as well as the community. And Mr. Hanson and the Goldman family, um, certainly supportive of the renaming and looking forward to the, um, passage of those resolutions. Thank you so much for taking the time, um, to come on and, and just share your stories this evening and your gratitude. Uh, Ms. Gaylord, thank you again for coming on and advocating for certainly your own self as well as the other residents who live on Park Drive North. Um, thank you to the administration and to Mr. Lapore, uh, for acknowledging and coming out and, and trying to create a, uh, short-term remedy. And, uh, we do look forward to making sure, uh, we work together to get some type of resolution so that you can continue, so that you do not continue, uh, to have any, any damage, uh, from any water, uh, streaming from any other neighborhood. Um, as, as far as downtown redevelopment is concerned, I am, am in complete agreement with my colleagues. Um, no need to reiterate. Um, I, I think our, our sentiment is all the same. Um, we do this because we want our town to be better. Um, and, and we're very concerned about the direction of our town, how our town continues to grow. Um, and we're very cognizant and aware of all the decisions that we make. Uh, Mr. Ballistiri, um, thank you for coming on. And again, we'll work with my council colleagues and the administration, um, to see if there can be anything, uh, to resolve your concerns as well. And, um, Ms. Roro, um, thank you again for your assistance and support. Um, as a fellow real estate professional, um, we certainly appreciate, um, you supporting the needs of the residents at two seventy-five. Think that's, um, all I have. Um, again, no need to reiterate, um, much of the commentary that has already been, uh, stated this evening. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Councilwoman Castellino.
Thank, thank you, Council President. Um, Mr. Fagan, I, I have to, you know, you, we, we spoke in regards to, you know, we had a name, um, these, these parking lots, uh, for our mobile app and for, um, Google Maps. And, uh, you dug deep. We wanted to bring some historic content, uh, to, uh, to the stories of, of each of these lots who we name, uh, after, uh, our, our residents, uh, with some historic value. And, uh, great job, uh, to the Hanson family. Uh, you know, thank you for, for your part in this and coming on this evening. Uh, Paul, um, just great story adding to, to why we do this and why we recognize our, our residents from, from so many years ago and for their service. And, uh, to the Goldman family, um, a- as well. Um, Jackie, you're always so still involved and, um, just your history of your family, um, is, is why West Orange is special because we remember our history here and, uh, and we pass it along to generations to come. Uh, I did not know, uh, today, uh, was National Day of the Deploy. So thank you to all our service, uh, members who serve our country, um, especially in these, these crazy times, you know, just two, a few months ago, we lost, you know, thirteen service members from, uh, killed in Afghanistan. So it's important that we remember those who, who serve our country. So again, Mr. Fagan, thank, thanks for all the work you do with, especially in our veterans, um, which veteran's day is coming up November eleventh. So we will have our township ceremony in a couple of weeks. Uh, Ms. Galliard, I'm glad, um, you came forward again tonight. And, uh, Mr. Lapore, just real quick, uh, I'm glad you're working on it. If, if the council could have a report back, um, especially for those who are working, we can't, uh, get there, uh, to meet you, it'd be great to, to get a report back so we could be kept posted on the situation. I'm sure you're on, on, on top of it. Let's see, let's see here. I had plenty of time, but there was a lot going around. I'm gonna start with the Northfield Avenue apartments. Um, you know, the mayor and Blair Council's president spoke in regards of, you know, the mayor having a, a, you know, co- comments passed his way in a negative way, which it, which is a shame. I mean, mayor stood up there. Um, you know, he always takes it on a chin, always accepts responsibility and works very hard, um, works extremely hard, um, to, to do what's right by this township. And, um, this horrible situation, and I have to also thank Mr. Trank, because I know he was on the phone that night and scurrying around. Um, not easy to make a decision to, you know, go, um, with the building department to go yank folks out of their bed at ten o'clock at night. Um, but we saw what happened in Florida and, um, you know, we, we, we try to do right by our residents. And I talked to, uh, quite a few residents and, and just to remind folks that thank God there wasn't a fire. Thank God there wasn't a collapse. Um, and, um, we are grateful to that. And for all those who've been so actively involved in, in helping, that's another great thing about our township is that everyone pitches in, um, to, to help each other, especially in this time of need. So, um, thank you, uh, to everyone for, you know, going above and, and beyond. Um, and our school district, um, they've been very helpful. Um, you know, the kids were traumatized, talking to a few families. And, um, you know, it's very unnerving for kids to know, um, to be worried about, you know, will they be able to go back to school, to their school because they're not living in their home. And, um, school district has great resources to reach out to our families and, and to assist them. So we want to thank them as well. Uh, our realtors such as, uh, uh, my council colleague, Tez, and to all the other ones trying to help out here. Um, you know, just, just thank you, everybody going above and beyond, especially Council President for, for organizing a, a lot. So, um, we, we learn in these terrible times that we all have to be thankful for and, uh, you know, to stick together. So again, great, great, great job, West Orange for that. And we'll, we'll get these residents through these, these tough times. But of course, you know, um, you know, things may have to, you know, get investigated and things happen and we'll look forward to whatever information comes back. Property owners have responsibilities for the property. And, um, so we'll, we'll see what happened, what happens, uh, with that situation. Um, my former colleague and as wife, thank you for coming on. Um, always great, uh, to challenge us with a lot of your, your questions. And I always am respectful of that.
You, uh, Councilwoman Castellino, you muted yourself. You, the last thing we heard, respectful of that. That was.
Yeah, yeah. So, so I appreciate all, all the questions. You, you got a lot of them in. Um, you know, we've had this conversation before, but you know, the, the numbers are, you know, they get scary when you're, and for the residents that called in, I don't blame you for being concerned and, and questioning us. The numbers are, are getting up there. Um, but just so you know, our debt ratio sheet, we're up at two point, uh, three, two percent. Um, these, the, um, state, um, recommends that we don't, uh, borrow over three point five percent. So we're well under, under. Um, but as I, I know my, my council colleague, if he was still sitting on, on the podium, would say, but we're over what we were five, six years ago. And I've been tracking it as well since you, we came on it. And you're right, we were probably a point eight percent since I came on the council. However, we're in a time of historic low interest rates. Um, we have a lot of infrastructure that we've been taking care of. I believe tonight we're going to have a presentation. What I appreciate with Mr. Gross and Ms. Lapore, yes, a few years ago, um, to, you know, in, in, for the sake of transparency and for our own knowledge, just to see what we have accomplished with what we borrowed and, and what are our needs moving forward with a lot was in our documentation. Um, for easy, uh, see, uh, fire residence is Degnan Park Complex, you know, drive by the high school, go to Degnan Park, a, a lot of infrastructure work there. Your roads, many residents had their roads paved this year. You know, this is, this is why we borrow. Um, our five. Our fire stations, our firehouses, so important. Our firefighters live there, they sleep there. And we're finally, there's been a five year plan. And we've, we're really making some movement on that as a resolution we have before us this evening. So, you know, we'll, we'll go over that a little later, but again, we paid down the debt. Looking to borrow the Green Acres money. With looking at redevelopment, we're not there yet to share. So that's always kind of hard sitting here as elected official when we can't share information yet. But when the thought out plan is presented to us, then we'll be able to comment further and more precisely. So I look, I look forward to that when that happens. But of course we are mindful and appreciate the residents for, for coming out. I hope you listen on to the presentation in a little bit. Council President, I guess we're going to discuss later for a firefighter. And, you know, I did not agree with this policy with administration on this. So I look forward to that conversation. I was there on March 13th in the Corona virus task force meeting. When we put the task force into a, action. And our first responders were out there in full force on the front lines. Many of them getting COVID such as Frank. And so I look forward to that con- conversation in a little bit. So thank you, Council President. I'll save my, the rest of my comments for when we get there.
Thank you, Councilwoman Catalina, and to all my colleagues for your thoughtful expressions and responses to the public comments. At this time, Madam Moderator. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
Yes. Okay, so consent agenda, approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting, minutes of October 12th, 2021.
Consent.
Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Yes, I actually did. And of course I can't find my notes, but I think that Mr. Gross would be able to just answer the question with respect to the invoices for our forester that are on the bill list. It's, I, I just want clarification with respect to when the council approved the new contract, the contract was for a half a day work, correct? That's my recollection. And then we had, you're, you're muted, Mr. Gross? Or I don't hear you. You're not muted, but I don't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you now. Sound like a phone commercial. So it, it was, it's my recollection that the council approved a one day workday. According to that contract. But the bill looks to me in excess of that. Can you, can you discuss that, please?
Yeah, the, the, the council approved contract with a rate for based on one day work week. However, that, that does not necessarily mean that at all times, that's the only amount of work that we might have. If we have additional demands, we would then prorate that, that, if we made a decision that we needed additional time because we had additional demands, the, the cost of that gets prorated. It is not interpreted to be that, 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 for instance, that if, if we already had the person here for one day and the next day we had an emergency circumstance that we'd have to wait a week to bring them back. That was never what was anticipated or, or considered. You know, the, the one day sets the, a goal, you know, generally speaking, that, that we look to, to get towards as well as to set the rate, the cost for, for that, that period of time. So I can appreciate there are those that, that may be skeptical about, you know, what, what, about the whole program and, and who's doing it, my understanding, but the, the, but the bottom line is we have a certain amount of workload and when we do, we have, we have to put, put the resources we have to it and pay accordingly. And that's what you're looking at tonight.
So with all due respect, Mr. Gross, because you know, I have much respect for you, your expertise in your office. As a, as an elected official voting on a contract that indicates contractual language for a vendor, for me, that is not a goal. It is the expectation. I do understand that there is the, the likelihood, right? If not the possibility, but the likelihood of additional work that cannot be, you know, completed in a day outside of an emergency. I don't understand the need to have that work completed in, in that. And I'm, I'm scrolling right now because I'm trying to find the bill that I'm, I'm questioning you on. But also the council did approve a second, a second forester to additional work. So I'm not seeing a difference in the invoices at this time. I think the last invoice, and I don't know what page it's on, I'm still, I'm still looking. I believe it was about $8,000, if I'm not mistaken. So that, so that, what I'm saying is that that is a concern. I know that we do also contract vendors for emergency services. And depending on the, the rig or the truck that they're using. You know, the size of the tree. I know all of that comes into play, right? That's Down's Tree Service. That's, that's for the emergency, but how, I, I, I'm still trying to understand how if the council approves a one day for a vendor, not much has changed. And I'll stop there. I, I see my council colleagues first, Councilwoman Rutherford, and then Councilwoman Catalina.
Uh, thank you, Council President. The, my, my recollection was that this was to transition away from this forester for some period of time, provide you know, a, a landing ramp, so to speak. So that the new forester could get up to speed, would understand some of the history with regard to some of the responsibilities of the forester. And that if there were additional needs outside of that one day, they would be satisfied by the new forester who's being paid a less, a, a lower rate per hour than the current forester. Now, I didn't vote for it anyway, or I don't believe I did. But I, 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 I think that's my recollection. And, and I think we got to that place because there were so many complaints in town with regard to this particular forester. So I don't understand how he's still getting more than one day's worth of work.
Ca- Council President, if I could, if I could interject and, and Mr. Lapore is, I believe on, so he can go into much more detail. But the, we, we actually, what we did and what, what Mr. Lapore proposed was actually to hire two different individuals and with, with different responsibilities for each. And in different, I, I, I guess scopes of work for each. So that, that one particular vendor was going to be doing more of the public work was doing the more of the private, the township work, bit work. So, so that, that is the basis for it. Again, you know, i- i- in terms of the, 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 the amount of work, at the end of the day, if we could extrapolate an existing contract at a non-emergency rate in emergency circumstance or in a, in a circumstance other than what was anticipated, that's going to be a lot less money for the taxpayer than going out and, and hiring an emergency firm to come in and do certain work. So we, we think it's an efficient way to, to do it based on the, the demands that we have. Again, if, if there's a desire to, to limit that and, and as such, you know, council certainly can, can give us that direction. We can give you an idea of what, you know, how we would react to that and how, how we might recommend to move forward if that's the case. But we certainly, we certainly need to be, the administration needs to be in a position where we can meet the day-to-day demands of, of, that, that we're presented with in, 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 in a manner that's efficient and effective and, and timely. So.
Thank you. And I, I want to just correct the record because I said 8,000 when I, and that was strictly from recollection. I did find it. If my council colleagues are looking at their bill list, it is page 13 of 29. Where I am looking at the budget shade tree operating expense for the forester. So in that block, my recollection was eight, it's actually 9,000 for both. So the shade tree department is $3,040. And Ronald Farr, who the council did approve in September by resolution 18021 was 6,52375 for a total of 9,563. So I just wanted to correct my statement. But I'm still, I, I would like to know what the $3,040 are for. But I will, I see Councilwoman Catalina's been waiting, so I will yield the floor.
Thank you, Council President. And yeah, I, I want a little bit of a breakdown because to my, as we all recall with the contract, and, and I get it, emergencies come up, but I mean, we can't make this a practice of, you know, there's always an emergency. So, so I need some scenarios, like what, what occurs, what constitutes an emergency? I thought the whole idea of the breakdown was we had somebody on call all week with the, between the, the two vendors. So what, what is Mr. Lapore? Can he, you know, elaborate a little bit on what's been going on or why we need the service? Because then again, I mean, i- if we needed this vendor for two days, then you should have, you should have stated that earlier. So I'm, I'm sure we have some ki- I know emergencies come up, but there's got to be some kind of track record of, of the needs for the past couple of years.
Are, are, am I on?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. When we put out the RFQ earlier this year, it was split into two different service categories. One strictly for private property and the issuance of tree removal permits. And the second was for services for the public and the Department of Public Works. I also indicated at that time, as we got closer to the end of the year, which we are rapidly getting to, I would reevaluate whether I wanted to continue that type of split work for the upcoming year. I briefly discussed that with our purchasing or acting purchasing agent today. And I will also discuss that with Mr. Gross because my thought is at this point, now that Mr. Farr has transitioned into the one aspect of the job, I would like to at least put this out for one person to handle all aspects of, of forestry services that are needed both for private property and public property. In this way, when Mr. Farr is here, if, if, I, I'm not waiting for another day when a, a second vendor needs to come in. And if his day permits, then he can do both public and private work, depending where he is in town. I don't need, at this point, I don't think to have two separate people filling those two separate positions. So I'm looking to, can, can, I'm looking to change this for 2022.
Thank you. Councilwoman Catalina, is that it for your questions? I see Councilwoman McCartney's hand.
Yeah, you know, and in fairness to Ms. Lapore, we did give him to the end of the year to reevaluate and, and come back to us, but you know, a- again, you know, the, you know, you, you see the bill list and, you know, you, you see the added expenses. So that's what we're here for. So tha- thank you, Mr. Lapore.
Thank you, Mr. Lapore. Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to ask Lenny that. Correct me if I'm wrong, but currently we do not have full forestry coverage for the week, do we? We, you know, we have these part-time people and, and not full coverage.
No, that, that's correct. We do not. That doesn't mean one can't get called in if we really have an emergency. But right now we're, we're at certainly two plus to three days of, of coverage. I'm not saying that's going to change an extreme amount if I go to just one consultant, but I, I think we can gain some economies if we do that.
Thank you.
Is that it, Councilwoman?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, I, I, I'm satisfied with, with those responses. I certainly appreciate you clearing that up, but I, I want us to continue to monitor these invoices because I know it's something that the public has, has loudly objected about. And certainly do appreciate your expertise, Ms. Lapore, in assessing the needs and if it can be consolidated to be less physical, I mean, financial impact, that'd be great as well. So thank you for your comments. Thank you, Mr. Gross. Do any of my council colleagues have any additional questions as to the bill list? No? Okay. Madam Clerk?
Hey, resolutions, Madam, Council President, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
I am not pulling, and I don't believe my council colleagues are pulling, but they do have questions. So Councilwoman Rutherford, you expressed you had a question earlier. Not sure if you got that answered.
I, I, I did, and it, and it was answered satisfactorily. Thank you.
Wonderful. Do any of my other council colleagues have any questions on the resolutions? Councilwoman Catalina, I see.
It, it's, it's more of a comment and for Mr. Gross. So on D 270, the, because the recycle reliable wood. I, I, I just, if you could just give a quick overview, because our, our former colleague made a comment and, and I believe in, in the public or portion of the evening in regards to this resolution. You know, the, the, the increase in cost to maintain our recycling, you know, with all that's happened with, you know, China not, not taking recycling anymore. Us trying to find a place to dispose of it. Mr. Gross, can you just give an overview of, of the expense, how it's really has increased tremendously and, and the need to extend these con- this contract for the two-year extensions, please?
Yeah, the, the, the cost of recycling has skyrocketed.
Yeah.
A- as we saw on our last contract, not this one, but a different contract for recycling pickup in, in the, not, not about two years ago. And, and, and that was because of basically, I, I guess, the trade war that's going off between the United States and, and China to some extent. And so the, 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 the ability to, to send recycling materials abroad has been reduced significantly, meaning that the, the, the alternative alternative sources or, or places to, to dispose of has been required and that's at an increased cost. At the very same time, this, this is a contract for our recycling center which allows our residents the, the alternatives of going there to, to, to do some recycling and as well as to get mulch and things of that nature that are generated on, on, on the site. This is a contract that was bid out. Has been out for a long time. And the last time, the current, the, the current operator, which is also an operator that's been with us for a long time, was the only bidder. And they bid within the terms and conditions that you're, they're looking at tonight with an option for two one-year renewals. The administration's very satisfied with the level of work that has been provided. We, we, we know that this is a limited market of, with vendors that are actually in this market. And so we feel that at this point in time, it's, it's certainly in the township's interest to go with the, this extension of this contract, which is a, a stable source for this service. And not risk the possibility of going out and on another bid at this point in time and, and potentially get a much worse deal. It is just, so that, that's our recommendation to the council. The, the contract calls and allows for two one-year extensions. Two one-year extensions. We're recommending extending on one this year and will reevaluate. In a year for the next one.
I do, thank you, Mr. Gross. And just for the benefit of the public, I want you to understand that you can access. Exhibit A, which is the. Original contract that includes that information about the potential. Extension for the additional years. There is information on the term of agreement. Oh, there's two hundred pages, two hundred and one pages, actually. Of information, but I wanted to make sure that I share with the public. I think that there was a comment made about the increase of rent. So the rent in the initial contract, and this contract dates back to March twenty nineteen. And the rent. To occupy the facility. Is at a rate of fifty thousand. And four dollars annually, or four thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars per month. That rate. Is extended for three years. And in the event that there is an additional extension. For twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, or twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, reliable shall pay. The same. So there isn't an increase. Perhaps I misunderstood. Mr. Krikorviak, when he said that, that's possible, but this extension, extended contract does not increase the. Annual or monthly rent. So I just wanted to be clear about that. And you can find that to read on your own. On the township website where the agenda is. Councilwoman McCartney.
Council President, so I had two pages of questions on this contract and did go through the two hundred and so pages. On it. You know, I don't have any questions really about the level of service that we do receive there and the product that is there. My questions were more about. Invoices to the township, about the excessive storm debris and the source of material. But one question I do have in number three, other provisions, or one question that has not been answered. In other provisions at number three, and I don't know if this is for Lenny, that. That they're proposing new asphalt pavement. To the site as an improvement, and they have made numerous improvements over the years. Lenny, is that something that you would oversee? And according to the new stormwater regulations, does that new asphalt pavement have to be a porous? Asphalt? And can it be?
Yes, it can be. I don't think we specified that. That's a much more. Expensive product to use. I'm not sure how good the benefits would be there, of course. Pavement, because we do have a lot of rock near the surface there. And it may not really have much opportunity to percolate down into the soil. But yes, that's something that we would oversee.
Okay. Would that, is that something you would consider, or you're saying that that?
With the vendor, but I don't know if we would consider it at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it, Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laporte and Mr. Gross for answering that question. To, oh, Mr. Councilman Rutherford, you see your hands.
Yeah, is it possible for the recycling center? To plant more trees around the border, particularly. The border with the apartments. And the assisted living or whatever that is, a facility on a summit. As well as the back side where Bel Air is to help cut down on both the smell. And the sound that comes from the facility?
Councilman, I'm not, I'm not smart enough to know the answer to that, but we actually employ a professional consultant. That is paid for by the vendor for just to. Help manage the site on our behalf. So that is certainly a question that we can refer to him. And find out, A, whether it's advisable, possible, and what ramifications that might be. So it's certainly something we can get back to you on.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gross.
Thank you. Thank you for that question, Councilman. Do any of my council colleagues have any additional questions on? The resolutions? Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Ordinances on second and final reading. Twenty-six sixty-one dash twenty-one bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements in and by the township of West Orange. Appropriating fifteen million two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, therefore. And authorizing the issuance of fourteen million five hundred and ten thousand dollar. Bonds or notes of the township to finance the part of the cost thereof. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading? Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Mathieu Brown?
Yes, and at this time before I open it to public comment, I'd like Mr. Gross to share. His presentation on the capital improvement budget, please.
Thank you, Council President. I have a short. PowerPoint presentation, and then I'll have to get off and get back on because I haven't figured out how to quite. Then I have a few comments before, if I could. Before you go into open, to the hearing itself.
Absolutely. So for those members of the public who are following along, we are on our ordinances on second and final reading. And the first ordinance is the bond to. That provides for various capital improvements. Go ahead, Mr. Gross.
Thank you very much. First, first part of the presentation, I just want to go through the. The specifics of the bond ordinance that's up for consideration. And then after that, I'll talk a little bit about where we are in terms of our debt and. And our strategies moving forward and a few comments regarding that. The two thousand twenty-one capital budget ordinance. That you see before you. Again, this. PowerPoint, we're going to post on the website tomorrow. I'm not going to read it all. But there's a lot of information in there, so we'll certainly, I think it'll answer most every question that anyone might have. If there's questions tonight, I can go to try to get the answers for them, but otherwise. So anyone can download it and take a look at it tomorrow on the website if they have further questions. So this ordinance is an orange from fifteen million two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. That's total appropriation. In a bond ordinance, there's a portion which is called down payment, and there's a portion that is borrowed. In this particular ordinance, it anticipates borrowing fourteen million five hundred and ten thousand dollars. With a down payment of seven hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Just as a. A part of this, a bond ordinance. You have to determine what the useful life is, and which basically means, you know, how long, how long will all the stuff you're going to buy last? And this particular one is thirteen point oh eight years, and that's how many years you have to pay back the bond. This ordinance covers twenty twenty-one capital expenditures. It will be financed in twenty twenty-two, most likely, which means we will not start paying on it until twenty twenty-three. And that's kind of the cash flow of borrowing. There is, it's a delay because. You're borrowing and then you pay after the fact. The breakdown of the fifteen million two thirty-sixes, as you see up there, capital equipment, six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Indoor facility improvements, two million seven hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Information technology capital, a million three seventy-six. Outdoor facility improvements, two million oh two five. Capital vehicle acquisitions, a million nine eighty-six. And street sidewalks and sewer improvements, six million four hundred and fifty, coming to the total of fifteen two thirty-six. Again, I'm not going to read everything, but this is, this is the description of what capital equipment is. What indoor facility improvements is, with some specificity as to the projects. Same thing with information technology and outdoor facility improvements. As well as capital vehicle acquisition and street sidewalk and sewer improvements. The twenty twenty-one road program. Frankly, what most people are usually get excited about in these programs, in this type of a bond ordinance. You'll see rolling up here, this is, are the streets that we anticipate will be done. Or could be done out of this bond ordinance. And again, you can see it's a pretty hefty list, probably forty-nine to fifty streets.
I'm sorry, I'm just going to ask everyone to please meet themselves. There's a lot of noise in the background. You're competing with Mr. Gross. Thank you.
So that's the road program, the. The rest of the program is, you know, what do we do with it? It's a lot of infrastructure. It's things that we buy or we need. So in this list here is basically the details, including our estimated costs. They're not exact costs. We don't know exactly what all this is going to cost. It's our best estimate. And that gets us to the amount that we've appropriated. Clearly, anything that we buy, we now have, we'll go into the. Procurement mode so that we can get even better prices than we estimated oftentimes, sometimes not so. But that's generally the next step, which gives us. More specificity as to exactly what we're going to spend.
Can you let this just like pause right around there so we can, well?
Unfortunately, it's rolling. I apologize. There we go.
Can we pause that? So the mobile LTE Wi-Fi antenna, is that for the? The communication systems that we have been upgrading for our emergency services?
No, that's only eight thousand dollars. That's a. A different product, it's a much smaller product, has to do with. Our local Wi-Fi, not, not, not the, not the mass communication. The mass communications is in here. As well, and that number is. Around a million dollars to finish off, which by the way, is a. We originally started about three and a half million dollars. Now we're down to about two. So we're doing very well with that project. So, and it's coming in on time and on budget, so, or under budget, I should say.
Okay, I'm going to pause you right here, Mr. Gross, as I see that Councilwoman McCartney and Councilwoman Castellino have their hands up. So Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you, John. So a question for you with replacing some of the vehicles, and I see some listed here. I do happen to see a Ford hybrid listed there. Can you say that we are moving forward or toward a more green fleet, where and when? It's possible, even according to our sustainable management plan and also the recommendations of Sustainable Jersey?
About a third of our, for lack of a better term, I call sedan. Are going to be energy-saving vehicles. We do not have yet a plan. To, or not ready to move forward. We do have a plan. I'm ready to move forward with electric vehicles. But we are working on a plan to first to add charging stations. And get charging stations in place because it's pointless for us to get.
Vehicles without.
So we're working on a grant, a couple of grants actually for that. And you and I have discussions about potential for a much larger project to include with that, so. We're looking at all sources of that, but yes, the answer is yes. It is, it is our plan. We are effectuating it right now with as much as possible with. The vehicles we do have access to now. So one of the problems we have found, to be honest with you, with the. The battery vehicles, the batteries are very, very expensive, like eighteen thousand dollars. And cars that sit for a long time, the batteries go quickly. So we have to be careful, make sure that we're, you know, we do have some vehicles that hardly, you know, that they don't get a lot of use just by nature. A local, local driving is not. As efficient. So our placement of those vehicles are going to be. Important so that we make sure that we don't waste the value of getting a energy-efficient vehicle by. By ultimately ending up having to. Eighteen thousand dollars a battery. So. We learn, we're all continuing to learn about the advances in technology and. The good, the downsides and the upsides.
Yeah. Okay, conversation to be continued. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castellino.
I saw it at the end, one of my questions, because I have to say, Mr. Gross, is there any way you could fix this for the public for when we. Post this meeting. I have to say, this is really hard to follow. I feel bad. I know you don't always do a lot of work on it, but.
When I post it, it won't scroll. It's just going to be, it will just be. I did this tonight.
Trying to follow the bouncing ball and. Not doing a good job at it.
Sense of what we're doing and posted so people could get the detail, all the details.
Okay, okay. So with the vehicles, I'm going to make an assumption, correct me if I'm wrong. We're following our five-year strategic plan for everything. Are we on? On point with that? Are we behind, or does this catch us up in regards to vehicles?
Fire, the firehouse. Projects, is that what you're?
Well, right now I'm talking about vehicles, whether it's for police, fire, township. I know we did some five-year strategic plans for the vehicles. Especially for the police department. Are we on, are we on schedule? Are we behind or where are we at?
If you recall, we had, we asked you and you approved. Us to move into a contract with Enterprise to help us manage our vehicles. Particular ordinance and the approval of this will allow us. To basically go into a program with Enterprise where we're replacing all of our vehicles. Every five years or on a rotating basis. So our vehicles will never be older than five years old, which means a couple of things. Number one, they're always going to be under warranty, so our repair costs are almost. So our repair costs are going to go down. They're going to be the most efficient vehicles on the road, so our cost of operation is going to go down. And because we're going to sell them when they're no more than five years old. The amount of money that we're going to be able to get at auction will be the highest. So our total net cost of operation is going to drop, we think around fifteen percent. At the very worst, it's going to break even. And that's a good thing because we end up with much more efficient. Costs as well as, you know, basically everyone will always be in a vehicle that's safe. And efficient to use. So we're very excited actually about this program. Look forward to it. And we'll certainly be keeping you up to speed on that.
I say we have two buses. I assume that the jitney service, are they senior busing? Where are we putting them?
Both. They, our buses. Will function, can function in both arenas. So these, we anticipate at first will be used as jitneys. But again, they can be used in both arenas. And they are, they are used in both arenas.
Okay. Us pack, where are you going with that? What were we looking to do there?
Just our next phase, we had committed to them. Just our next phase, we had committed to them over, over a period of years to help them with their technology. Needs, and so there's a hundred thousand dollars set aside to continue that.
Okay. And I see you have six and a quarters. Budgeted for the firehouses.
They, yeah, it's actually six hundred thousand is for the firehouse.
Okay. Okay, and how we, how we, like, where does that leave us with that whole strategic plan?
We think, we think this might be the last tranche, although it might, it might, you know, it might be a little bit more, we'll say. But, you know, we, we've, we've done a lot of work the past year with it and, and with, with the firehouses. And coming along, and this, this will allow us now to move into all the firehouses now and do certain work.
So, so that's great, so that's allocated towards just the firehouses and that plan. Where are you spending the, or anticipate and spending the indoor facility funds for five hundred thousand?
Well, there, there's just five hundred for, for indoor facility is just in general funds, some of it could be, for instance. Rock Spring, some of it could be. Ten Rooney and other facilities that we have, so, you know, one of the things, especially now taking, now becoming a landlord at Ten Rooney.
Yeah.
We, we, we have to be prepared to react to a lot of different possibilities, capital repairs that might be necessary on a moment's notice. So it is definitely, th- these are funds that, additional funds that we need to set aside for that.
Okay, plus we have the other funds from the developers that they donate, that they allocated towards the project?
That, 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 that will come at closing, those are separate funds, those, and those funds are all earmarked for the library improvements. So that, that, those funds will not be used for day to day. Concerns, you know, we certainly will not, certainly would not be, for instance. Be used for making improvements or repairs to our tenant's space, that's something we have to do ourselves.
Now, now, when we, we first set, when we first set the budget, I know this isn't really capital, but when we first set the budget. We had, well, we're still not closed on, on that property. Where does the rental revenue come in, is that, did you calculate that anywhere in this year's budget, or is that an extra bonus we'll, we'll have moving forward?
It's not going to be a bonus a, a, at first, because we have, first thing, it, it, it may end up being such, you know, so, so there may be some surplus that will generate from it. But we have to learn, we have to learn about this building.
Yeah.
Sure that we, you know, that, the, the history of the building is, is such that. We believe that there will be some bonus in, in, in the real, or not bonus, excuse me, some surplus that we'll be able to generate. From, from the difference between our revenues and our expenses, but at first, it's going to be learning about the building and making sure that, that, that we, that we. We're managing it properly so that we can be responsive to our tenants, because the tenants pay. A, a, a good rent and they're, they're expect a high level of service to which we intend to provide.
And, and last question on this. You know, as we move forward, we need to have a conversation about that building. Because you, I'm not sure if you're allocating a, for a site manager there, or like, who are you going to designate to just manage that building? So we have to answer that now, but I would, would like a conversation about that in the near future.
I can tell you that it will be professionally managed. And, and, and it is not, it is not a, in my opinion, a responsibility that we're going to give to any of our existing staff.
Yeah.
We just don't have the bandwidth to do that, we, we.
Exactly.
We have a short term plan and, and, and a long term plan, the short term plan, we will be continuing. Pretty much status quo, the way things are being managed now there, and then we will then take a look moving forward on a more permanent basis.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Gross, I appreciate, thank you, Council President, for letting me have the time.
Yeah, thank you for all of those questions, Mr. Gross, if you want to continue.
Frozen?
No. You're at twenty twenty capital projects, oh.
Oh no, I'm frozen here, hold on just a second, I apologize.
That's okay.
Problem of being live.
That's fine. We're all quite used to that after almost two years.
Yeah.
Being zoomed out.
Problem with high technology, it works terrific until there's that little glitch. Okay, can you still see? PowerPoint?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, share it.
I'll share again. Okay.
No, we can't see it.
Cannot?
No. There it is.
There we go. Okay, one of the things that we'd like to do is to review what we've done in, from the previous years. Capital. Oh, don't tell me. I apologize, froze again. Give it one more shot.
John Megan suggesting, if you want to email it to her, then she could post it.
I, I, I think I got it now, I apologize, it's just, sometimes these screens don't. Cooperate. Okay, let's try now. Okay. It's live now?
No.
Shares, I mean, it's live here.
There you are. Yep.
Good, okay, capital projects underway or completed. This is the roof at Town Hall, we finished, we, we, brand new roof that we put on. You can't see it from the outside because it's this type of a design, it's a flat roof, but it's, it's been completed. In terms of. I apologize. These are, this is some of the IT, all new body cams, the, again, we talked about the, the, the radio systems. Are done, I don't know, for some reason, the, the verbiage isn't coming up. Again, outdoor improvements, whether it be the, at the OS pack or. Our, our, our new facilities.
Degnan.
Degnan, yeah. This goes to the vehicles from, from last year, not all of them are in, but we, but they, we just ordered about. Four hundred thousand dollars worth of vehicles that, through, through our enterprise contract. Street improvements. There's the streets that we did this year, rolling by.
What's the total number, do you have that?
It's a, it's over forty, it might be as many as fifty, I can get you the exact number.
Okay. Thank you.
So, any questions about the ordinance itself?
I don't have any questions, do my council colleagues have any questions about the ordinance itself? Councilwoman Castelina.
Well, question add, I just wanted to share with the public, just because we passed this ordinance tonight. That doesn't mean we don't have extra eyes on each project, so as each project is presented to us. It will be individually presented to us via resolution, and at that time, if we're not in agreement with the project or. Or, you know, or what's presented to us, we'll be able to, you know, vote on that at that particular time, so this is just setting aside the financing. But as far as the individual financing for each project, that will, that will come when each project is presented.
You're absolutely correct, as, as, as I mentioned earlier, right, right now, what we have are based on estimates, estimated costs. And obviously, the procurement process, which for the most of the things will all come before council, before, before we move forward to make sure. I'd like to talk a little bit about, you know.
Before you move on, just, just, I was looking for it, but I can't find it, and I should have been better prepared. Our last year's capital improvement. Budget. Did, did we? Exhaust it, it, was it all used?
It's not all used, I, I went through a lot of the projects that we've done here. There, there are still more to be done, and, and those projects will, will be completed and the process of. So the, the, we certainly like, I can get you a list if you're, if you like, of, of the things that are left from that still to be done.
Okay, that, that would be good to have. Go ahead, I'm sorry, interrupted.
No, no problem, so, part of this is like, you know, why do we, why do we, why do we buy all this stuff, why don't we buy this through our budget? And, 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 and why do we go out and borrow money for it? And, and part of it is, is, is just pragmatism, and part of it is, is, is policy. I mean, the things that we're buying are not things, we're not buying paper clips here, we're buying things that are substantive value that have a, a useful life. As I mentioned before, this particular one's useful life is thirteen years, so they have a long life, and therefore, to some extent, they're more expensive. And we borrow not because we don't, because we can't afford to pay cash, although. It, it, so one might argue that, that the taxpayers would object to paying for it all front, I think they'd be right. But, but the reason that that objection is, is valid is that, that by, by, by borrowing money. And paying for them over the useful life of the product, of the project or the projects. The, the people who are actually enjoying the use of the project are the ones that pay. So you take the cost of this particular bond ordinance tonight, is going to be spread out over thirteen years. The thirteen years, which happens to be the useful life of what it's buying, and, but when you do that. You're, you're basically allocating the cost, plus a little bit of interest. To, to the individuals who are here and paying taxes during that period of time. So it, 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 you don't have a situation, for instance, where if some towns do it, some towns pay for their capital all upfront. And that, that, they've done it all always that, that way, and so whoever is here pays for the road improvement. And then if they move out of town, they don't enjoy that anymore, somebody else comes in who didn't pay for it, and they enjoy it for the next twelve, twelve years. So this is, this is a, a policy that, that is longstanding in municipal government, and it's, it's kind of the pay as you go. Type model, although usually some people think of pay as you go as. This is actually pay as you go in terms of the taxpayers who contribute towards the payment of it. Now, tonight, most of the stuff that is in the, this fifteen million dollar ordinance is, is. For lack of a better term, stuff, things we need, it's some infrastructure, it's, it's equipment, it's cars, it's IT. It's things that make our operations work. And that, that, that's one thing, the other things we do with, with capital, we do investments. Now, we've talked tonight a little bit about that, or it was mentioned that, that our, the amount of debt has gone up significantly, significantly over. A number of years, I went back to two thousand and eleven, in two thousand and eleven, we had about, about sixty million dollars in debt, and now we're at one fifty one, ten years later. It seems, that seems like a really, really big increase, but if you look at, if you look at the debt ratio that. Councilwoman Castelina talked about earlier. Two thousand and eleven, the debt ratio, which by the way, as she mentioned, you're allowed up to three and a half percent. The debt ratio was about one percent, now it's at two point three two percent. So that, that's a much more moderate number, and that's because it's relevant to our total, our, our, our total economy. So it's, it's a better gauge of, of how our debt has grown over that period of time. Even better gauge than that is the amount of, the percentage of our, of our budget that's going to debt service. So in two thousand and eleven, about six point eight percent of our budget went to debt service, now it's going eight point seven. So it's, it's a much more moderate increase than, than the gross numbers would, would indicate. Having said that, we still do have to figure out how to finance this, moving, moving forward. And, and we've been, we've been working hard at, at, at doing it, we, we were coming through a ten year period where interest rates have been ridiculously low. We, 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 at one point, we, we did a borrowing for a quarter of a percent, I mean, it's, it's just unbelievable how low it is. That's not going to last forever, and we've been about the business over the past few years of trying to lock in those low rates. For long term debt, now long term debt historically is four to four and a half percent, and we've been locking in somewhere in the, in the, the mid to high ones. And, 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 and low twos, in the worst case, so we, that, that's going to be very important for us moving forward in, in order of paying down our debt. But there are other ways we pay down our debt. And that is, when you look at some of the investments we made, we're, some of these investments actually reap benefits. So if you, if you look at the, the past ten years, we're up about ninety two million dollars, about a third of that, about thirty percent of that is, again, going back to what I called stuff. What's left is about sixty five million dollars that, which I'm going to go through, which a lot of it produces benefits back to the town. And that's why I call them investments, for instance. Infrastructure investment, joint sewer, we spent about five million dollars on, to the, with the joint sewer commission. Of which, we're going to get about ninety percent of that back from FEMA, so we're going to get the benefit of, of five million dollars that, that's in these numbers. But we're going to get ninety percent of that back, so it's about four point two million. We have, in, in these numbers, we have about seven million dollars for the new library at Ten Rooney. We're going to get about three point two million of that back through a grant, so that, even though, even though our, our ordinance amounts are high. We, we're getting revenues back that, that, that's going to offset it. We, 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 we have six point three million dollars for the Edison redevelopment, part of that redevelopment. Interesting thing about that is we're going to get three point one five of it back from the redeveloper over time. And we have a one point two million dollar pilot per year, you know, that we would not have had before. So there's a revenues that we're getting, annual revenues that were, that offset that. Same thing with, with the downtown redevelopment, the, the, the thirteen million and the seven million, which is twenty million, we anticipate that we're going to get that back in some fashion. It's not guaranteed on exactly how we're going to do it, but that's the objective, and, and we feel very confident about that. We also think, not only we're going to get that back, but we're going to have a, a, a redevelopment. We also think, not only we're going to get that back, but we're going to have a, a, a redevelopment that's going to bring a million and a half to two million dollars more in every year to, to, to offset some of our other costs. Same thing with, you know, we, we've spent about a little over nineteen million dollars in open space acquisition and development, which between Rock Spring and Crestmont, and, and a couple of other small things that we've done. So of that, realistically, we think we're going to get about seven million dollars back from, from Green Acres on, on some of these, Green Acres and, and the Open Space Fund from the county. Is, in addition to that, we never anticipated, but we're going to, we're reaping, but last year we reaped about six hundred thousand dollars from the operation of the golf course. So again, we're paying, we have so many opportunities to pay back the, the, these, these investments that we're making. And, and just to go through just a couple more, in, in this sixty-five million dollars that we've been up in the last ten years, you know, we've done over a million dollars in school facility improvements. That's, that's an investment in our community. We've done about, about a million dollars of investment in commuter enhancement investment, whether it be buses or, or parking locations to facilitate commuters. And with, we have a half a million dollars in valley redevelopment to completely redo an area of town that was environmentally a disaster. And, and we're bringing it back. I'm going to have great housing there and, and really revitalize that, that, that community. So this whole thing, this whole list I've gone through is about sixty-five million dollars in, in, in bond ordinances, which I estimate around forty-two million dollars of offsetting one-time revenue. So it's about two-thirds of it. We think we're going to get back and feel very confident of that. In addition, it's about three point eight to four million dollars of recurring revenue that we think is, is, is realistic. And, and again, so all that goes to, this is, a lot of what we've spent over the last ten years, our investment in West Orange's future and its future economics, both in terms of quality of life and, and its actual, the cost of doing business. So I think the concerns that, that are being expressed about the level of debt are valid concerns, but I think that we've approached it in, in a responsible manner and in a manner that ultimately are going to pay benefits to the township, not be a cost.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. That was, that's very helpful to understand. You know, because while we may sit and look at all of the information you give us, the benefit, the, the, the public doesn't have that benefit because, I mean, really, who wants to? It's just easier to, to hear an account of it. So I certainly appreciate that. And I'm also going to ask if you can share that as well on the website with the rest of your PowerPoint. That would be really, really great. I, I, and, and that, that really is a good point that you've made that, and, and it's what I said earlier, these are all investments. We can't, you know, take a position of obstruction because we don't want to bond, but it is an investment. And, and as we've seen with Rock Spring is, is, you know, most of the community is very supportive of that. And I'm looking forward to being able to apply for the Green Acres funding at some point to be able to offset some of these things. The library, I mean, incredible investment for our community. Just, you know, the, the facilities, the ability for people to commute, you know, at no cost to them. These are, these are all programs that really benefit our community. I am going to open it up. Madam Moderator, are you, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I'm going to open it up at this time for public comment on this ordinance. So if there's anyone that has a question, has a comment in the public and would like to participate in public comment, we will wait for the timer to be up on the screen. And Madam Moderator, you will see who is ready to speak in public comment for the ordinance. And please be reminded that this public comment is specific to ordinance two six six one, which is the bond ordinance for the various capital improvements. Please restrict your comments to that.
Okay. First up is Joe Kukoviac.
Okay.
Joe Kukoviac, Grandview Avenue. Thanks very much for this presentation. It's much more helpful than the little bit of information that's in the ordinance. So thank you. I just have some questions about some of the proposed purchases. And I don't know whether Mr. Gross addressed these previously, but these were the ones that I took notes on. On, on the descriptions in sub-paragraph I, it talks about stage equipment. And I was wondering what that was. Same way with front-end loader and backhoe. I'm just wondering if this is a new purchase, a replacement purchase, and what were the results of the cost-benefit analysis of either buying the equipment or renting it? On the, on point two, sub-paragraph two, it talks about facade and interior facility improvements. I wanted to know how much of that was going towards Rock Spring Golf Club? What that actually involved? In sub-paragraph four, it talks about including but not limited to upgrades of park paths and traps and the installation of a new, it says, lighting detection system at Rock Spring Golf Course. I'm assuming it means lightning detection system at the golf course. I wanted to know what those things were and what a total, the total cost of those is going to be. In, later on in that paragraph, it talks about rubber surfaces at Liberty. I wanted to know what Liberty is. I know that we have a, you know, Liberty school, but I'm not sure that that's what we'll be spending that money on. So I was just wondering where Liberty was and what the amount of money are we spending there? Also, on the same, in the same section, it talks about replacement of all pool plaster tiles, deck drains, and other miscellaneous improvements at the township pool. Just wondered what that cost is. And that's, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Next up is Claire Silvestri.
Okay. Thank you, Claire Silvestri, Twenty Grandview Avenue. I want to thank Mr. Gross for the PowerPoint presentation and a lot of the details that is planned to be posted to the website. I would just point out, I, I seem to be beating the same drum over and over again. It would have been very helpful to see the, that level of detail posted to the website prior to tonight. I know that I looked at the bond ordinance on the agenda, and as was mentioned by the previous speaker, you know, a lot of the improvements or the purchases are clustered together. So it's very difficult to actually make informed comments or questions. But I did have a couple. I, I did have a question about the five point one million for road improvements. Mr. Gross said that there are forty-nine streets slated to have improvements in a year, and also mentioned that last year there were forty-nine streets that had improvements. From my experience, that sounds like about double what we typically would do with streets. I'm amazed that we are able to do that many street, cover that many streets in a year. So I just wanted to, to make sure that, 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 that is the correct information, that is forty-nine streets in a year. And also, in sub-paragraph six, there is renovations to the Bull and Park Pump Station, purchase and installation of tree, shade trees throughout the township, and various drainage improvements throughout the township for a cost of one point three million. I was just wondering if there could be a breakdown as to how much of that money would be going to shade trees, and also about the various drainage improvements hearing from the issues from residents on Park Drive. I wondered if that was part of, that project was part of that one point three million. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that want to speak to this ordinance?
Not seeing any.
Okay, thank you. So I'm closing the public portion of comments on this ordinance, Mr. Gross.
Yes. Yeah, so in, on the, in the PowerPoint, when I post it tomorrow, actually, every line that we have anticipated is in there with an amount. So we'll make sure that that's nice and clear. We could, you know, Council President, if you, if you want to ask me or you want to go through the list of that, that was asked tonight, we can do that. But again, there's an awful lot, obviously, in there. That, that's up to you. If you would like to go through them one by one, if you tell me what you want me to report on.
I think, I think it's best, I'm sorry to interrupt, I think it's best if you post it so that we all have access to it. And if we have questions, we have your email and can reach out with those questions, because then I'm going to find myself trying to take speed notes and, and miss something. So I think posting them would be fine. There was also a question that Mr. Kukoviac had with respect to the stage equipment. I think you addressed that with respect to OSPAC. When Councilwoman Catalino asked what the funds for OSPAC were to be used for, and that was for some improvements of their, of their, was it music or lighting? I know that they needed some stage equipment that needed to be replaced. He also asked with respect to the front-end loader and backhoe, whether or not there's an assessment done with respect to renting versus purchase.
Yes, and we, we've, we've looked at that, and we, we, this is a purchase, one, one is a purchase, the other is a, a, basically a refab of a, a one that we have now. So we, we, we have sufficient use that we think that purchasing makes more sense for us. Renting can be valuable in areas, you know, with equipment that you don't use a lot of year-round. But we feel very confident that, that this is the right move.
And I think you also addressed this earlier with respect to Councilwoman Catalino's question, subsection two, the facade interior facility improvements, how much of that includes Rock Spring? And your, your response to that was, it was for various improvements throughout the properties that we own, including Rock Spring. I don't believe that you have a, a set amount for each, unless you have that listed.
Um, there is not, there, there is not a, we don't, we don't have a list of projects for each. We, we've put sufficient funds aside for, for our facilities. There's probably, frankly, a million dollars more for, for these we've put aside because we, we know that, again, with the, the Ten Rooney, it's just, there's just a lot that's unknown there. And with, with Rock Spring, we know that in addition to the outdoor material, we have, we have an old building there, and, and to the extent that it's going to require emergency repairs or, or major repairs, the likelihood is, is high, you know, as, as these buildings get older and older. And again, we don't have the history to, to, with, with the buildings over, over a twenty-year period to, to, to take a chance that we would not have sufficient funds available to us, should something major happen.
And is that a lightning detection system?
It is. It's a lightning detection system for there and for sack field. And, and basically, that is exactly what you might think it is. It's kind of basically lets us know when, when, when lightning is coming so we can make sure that we take the necessary steps that we would take when, when a protect, a, a storm would be coming. Get people off the field.
Yeah, there's been rain out there, and I've seen them on there. Claire Silvestri asked with respect to the posting of this level of detail in advance. Annually, we've had Mr. Rose introduce it first to the council so that we can have the discussion in public, both with council questions and the public's questions. So that's just the format in which we've traditionally done it. And it'll be up on the website tomorrow. And with respect to the street breakdowns that you'll see tomorrow as well, I do know that just, you know, three years on the council, I mean, every, I, I feel that every agenda, we have some streets, multiple improvement projects on our agenda. So if it is more than usual, I would imagine the wear and tear, the climate. Quite frankly, I think that we can all add some more streets on there, and my neighbors would say the same.
I just want to clarify, I thought that I said forty-nine for the, for the previous year, and I thought forty or so for the, for the new year. I thought that's what I said.
That's what I heard you say.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't think I said forty-nine for both. Having said that, they're not exact counts. They're, you know, you know, I went, went, in preparing this, I had a numbered list. I think, you know, my recollection at the bottom of the list were those numbers. But, but again, you know, and, and, and when we say a street, it could be a portion of a street. You know, so it, it, you know, usually we define, you know, from an intersection to an intersection, if it's not the whole street. So again, and, and this is a list, this is projected list, you know, when it comes down to, we, we often expand that as we go along, especially if we find savings somewhere. So it, it could grow. There could be situations that come up where a particular street that we thought could be done can't be done for some reason. So this is, again, this is a plan. It's not a bid document. So we're, it's, it's where we were trying to go.
And also just want to reiterate to the public something my council colleague shared earlier. All of, all of these plans, projects still have to come before the council for approval at each juncture. So this is a budgeting plan that we're looking at. Do any of my council colleagues have any additional questions, or can we have a motion? Councilwoman Williams, I saw your hand.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I have a question, and this is just probably a procedural question, more so than anything else, from my knowledge. So when we approve this amount of debt servicing to bond these funds, in the event, for instance, when we're doing road paving and we come back and we add additional roads to the authorization, how does that impact our, our debt service if we've already bonded that amount? And I guess that's just a general question.
So first, first, this, this does not authorize, or it does not authorize any more or less one road over another. We've provided you with lists of, of, of our plan, and that, that plan is, is subject to availability of funds, you know, bids. You know, sometimes a bid comes back, and if there's a price increase, then, then we may not be able to do as many of these roads. If there is a price decrease, we may be in a position to do additional roads, and that's where that would come. We cannot increase the amount of debt without going through another bond ordinance. So that, that, this is a flexible plan within flexible dollars. So because these are the dollars, it's no more or less.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilwoman McCartney.
Well, I just wanted to pick up where Councilwoman Williams was saying, John. I think she is asking about change orders. Are there funds built in here for change orders?
Well, again, change orders has to do with the procurement process. You know, we, 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 we will, we will have change orders. When, when we go through a process to actually do procurement, we will usually try- we will usually try to reserve some funds for things we don't know. And so that's where, that's where change order money comes from. But it, it's not at this level, at this time. Right now, the, the, these, these dollars are based on our best guesstimate or estimate of what the, the procurements are going to cost. But they're, they're, they're not narrow enough to be specific.
I make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve.
Twenty six sixty-one dash twenty-one.
Six one dash twenty-one.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Councilwoman Castellino?
Uh, yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance twenty-six sixty-two dash twenty-one. Bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of various properties pursuant to the downtown redevelopment plan, appropriating $7 million therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $7 million bonds or notes of the township to finance the costs thereof. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So move.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes. And at this time, I'm going to allow members of the public, Madam Moderator.
We have Claire Silvestri.
Okay, can you put the timer up, please?
Yes.
Thank you. It's a, it's a four minutes.
Yeah, it'll, as soon as I.
Okay.
Click it.
Okay, great.
Don't worry, I won't take that long. Claire Silvestri, 20 Grandview Avenue. I just want to express my disappointment with the comments of the council members tonight about this ordinance. The township does not have to purchase this, these properties. This is not common practice for the, for a township to handle redevelopment. And it puts all of the risk on the taxpayers of this town to reimagine downtown. We do not need to do it this way. And it's really disconcerting to hear that we are going to have discussions with the public as soon as we close on these properties. The main issue here is that we are, are putting ourselves out $20 million in, in bonding, in debt. And, and for the council to, to be so dismissive of the public and say that we will, we will engage with them and share information with them after the, the horse has left the, the barn is, is quite disconcerting. And I just want to point out to the, to the council member who says, who has said, trust us, you know, we have to do this behind closed doors at this point because, and, and it will all come out. Just, I, I just remember reading the lawsuit from Prism and the response by the township. And in reading that, it, it doesn't give many people much confidence in this administration's ability to pull off a deal this large. To expect that we are going to bring, we're going to buy all these properties and then expect a redeveloper to come in and pay us what we, we purchased for it somewhere down the road is, is, is a risk that I think that the township should not be putting on its, its taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members from the public want to comment on this ordinance specifically?
Not seeing anyone.
Okay, closing public comment to this ordinance. My council colleagues have any comments? They want to share, questions they want to ask, this is the time to do so.
Council President?
Yes.
Just want to reiterate something Mr. Gross said earlier. The objective here is to engage in a project that will get this money back, one way or another, over the course of time. No one wants to put the risk on the taxpayers without having some ability to recoup these investments. But if we are going to be able to move forward with a downtown project that makes sense for, for all of West Orange, not just that corridor, but for all of us, we're going to have to do some things, maybe, that were not done before. Things were tried in the past, and they were not successful as we can see in downtown right now. And if we're going to do something there that's going to get the downtown area revitalized, energized, attract, attract additional investment and give us a product that we can all be proud of, and opportunity for us to go and spend our own dollars in our own town, we're going to have to do some things differently. I just hope that Ms. Silvestri and those that share her viewpoint are willing to give this council the benefit of the doubt. This council, you have three members on this council that are, are very new. You only have one member of the council that's been on for any length of time where they would have had a significant say in some of the prior developments on the downtown corridor. So we're trying our best to bring to West Orange a downtown area that we can all be proud of and that can help move this township forward. And I just hope that the, the public will give us the leeway that we need in order to represent their interest and, and do a project that we can all be proud of. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford. And I, I do want to just add to that point where we are doing things differently. And I feel that, you know, and obviously you, Councilman Rutherford and the Councilwoman Williams and myself are the newest members to the council. And, and in my three years, I feel that, and even having had, you know, collaborations, if you will, with former Councilman Krikorviak, it feels as if everything the township does is, is not the right thing to do. Rock Spring, we had meetings over meetings over meetings, and it was still an issue. Executive Drive, public meetings, presentations, and, you know, and it's still an issue. So I don't say that, Ms. Silvestri, to be dismissive of you. It's not an intent to offend or to not be transparent. But like Councilman Rutherford said, we are trying things a little differently. And you're right, we don't have to. But we are doing it, in, in essence, so that we can have the, the liberty to move a project forward. And when we're ready to do that, we are looking forward to including the voices of the community. So I am sorry that you feel that it is dismissive. I didn't, I didn't feel that Councilman Krikorviak's, or any of my council colleagues' responses were dismissive. We're really just trying to change the direction of reimagining our destiny. And I'll stop there before Councilwoman Castellino.
Yeah, and you know, again, we go back and, you know, to, to be fair in all the work and, and our Madam Moderator, who's also our downtown director, it's been challenging to move our downtown forward. There's been a lot of setbacks. There was litigation on the properties years ago by residents that held up the original phase one for many years. So that was disheartening, and that slowed progress down. You know, you have recession, yeah, yeah, we had the real estate market fall out through the years. So there, there's been other challenges other than just creativity. I think the timing is right now. There is a real estate boom here that's reached our township. And I think, you know, we need to, you know, we're always think, we try to think out of the box, but it's, you know, timing's everything. And I think we're at that time where all, all the stars and the moon, the planets are all lining up. And hopefully, we'll come forward with a little more detail in the near future. And the hardest part, I always say about being elected officials, when you can't talk about something. So things have to be negotiated, and then you're, be able to, to respond. So I think at that point in time, there would be more excitement as people were excited with Rock Spring, the purchase of Crestmont. And I don't think this, I don't anticipate when this moves forward, that's going to be any, any different. So I look forward to, if anyone else isn't ready to speak, make an emotion.
I agree to that. Any of my other council colleagues have any comments or want to respond to public comments?
I'll thank you to my colleagues, and I would second that motion if that was in fact an official motion.
It was.
There we go, second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-six sixty-three dash twenty-one. Bond ordinance providing for the remediation, demolition, and development of township-owned properties identified on the official tax map of the township, commonly known as block nine, lots thirty-two and thirty-six, referred to as eight, eight to ten Central Avenue, respectively pursuant to the Central Avenue Development Plan, appropriating $500,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $500,000 bonds or notes of the township to finance the costs thereof. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So move, second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes. At this time, are there any members of the public who would like to speak to this ordinance, two-six-six-three? Please raise your hand.
Not seeing anyone.
Okay, you were quick with that timer this time.
I thought it took me a while to get over to you.
I saw that. Okay, closing public comment. Council colleagues, any questions, comments that you would like to make on this ordinance?
Council President, I wanted to say that I am glad we did not hear any pushback on this because so much work has been done over the past few years. And the commitment by the Albert Group, you know, I still commend them for the work and the work they're doing. And we're just going to continue to remediate and revitalize that Central Avenue Valley Road corridor.
Thank you for those comments. I'm very, very excited about the attention and focus that, that the administration has given the Valley Corridor. You know, it, it's just, it's a whole different feeling down there. And I'm sure it'll be that much better when we have our, both our market rate units and our affordable housing units. Mr. Trank, is there a timeline you want to share with us? Can you speak to this ordinance as well, please?
Well, this is obviously continuing part of, the, the Plenary Board has provided final approvals. The council has obviously heard this matter. And as you said, the seventeen units on Tompkins, the affordable, we believe, will likely break ground before the end of this year. And then on Selecta Flash Biddleman, which is combined, as you know, that will provide some shared parking, including public parking, that'll support Luna and hopefully some additional commerce in that area. That probably will be this spring because, in all honesty, the, the money you're allocating tonight is critical because when we took down the old Selecta Flash building, there was some contaminated concrete, and, and it has to be disposed of. It cannot be re-ground on the site. So it has to be disposed of. And that why, that through this bond money, plus basically the million five that the Albert Group is going to pay for acquisition of the Biddleman site, that'll provide the resources needed to implement the remedial action work plan that is pending approval with the D.
Wonderful, thank you for that. And I, and I want to also echo the fact that the Albert Group, and I hear also comments about, you know, the mayor's, and this is an air quote, the mayor's redeveloper. The Albert Group has, has stuck around our township with the cleanup of the Valley properties for almost 20 years, and, and, and has committed to that. And is, is a developer who does affordable housing. That, that is the focus of, of his project. So I too am very grateful that they have a commitment to our township and that they are willing to continue to, to work with us on this. And really do like their responsiveness.
And apro, I'm sorry, just apropos to your comment,
that one of the first apartment owners we called when the 275 Northfield occurred was the Albert Group. And I believe they've accommodated at least four, they're almost full, as you know, on the 22 Central Avenue site. But I believe they were able to accommodate four, or in the midst of finalizing at least four units for the, the former tenant of 275. So they've been, they've put those folks at the top of the list for any vacancies that come up on Central Avenue.
They're, they're certainly great community partners. I'm really grateful for them. Councilwoman Castellino?
Thank you, Council President. I was gonna, you know, give kudos to the Albert Group. They've been a great working partner in that section of the Valley. Just the tremendous progress that has been made. And I also, you know, not only administration, but also our colleague, Councilwoman McCartney, for all her years that she has spent working with, with Albert Group and Lona Stage and the Valley Arts Council. And like all your hard work with Rose DeSena and Hans through the years. This got to be very exciting for you. You've done outstanding.
Preservation, I'm, I was upset that you did not get that grant, but it goes back to the Valley Neighborhood Preservation.
Yeah, so just that, well, so many people involved and seeing this come to fruition. But I know you're a, I, I'm seeing you on the screen tonight, and you got to get some kudos there yourself because you had great vision for that, for that part of town. And it's, it's all coming to fruition, which is, which is, you know, a good feeling. And when we all work so hard to get these projects done. So thank you for your efforts as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. My hand is raised because, to follow up on Mr. Trank's comment. And John Gross just gave us so many avenues to offset a lot of the bonds that we just approved. And Mr. Trank, I'm wondering if the brownfield funds would be able to offset some of this.
Well, this is our part, as you recall, and, and I'm glad that someone just mentioned Rose DeSena because she really was at the forefront of this for, for as long as you were. The brownfields development, the BDA, will pay 75%. So it just shows you what the scope of these issues were. Our 25% is made up not only of this $500,000, but basically another million two-ish of the Albert money that is going to go to it. So that's just our, our 25%. So we are getting, and, and we have gotten, and again, Mr. Gross can tell you the scope of it, but we've gotten probably a million dollars already as part of the investigation work in this corridor and are going to spend this money. So yes, we are, we are leveraging every penny we can get, thanks again to the state. And that's one of the reasons we're so excited to finally get this project done. Because obviously, you're always worried that some of these funds could dry out. So we are continuing this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I did just also remember my conversation with Mr. Albert. One of the other things, in addition to his efforts in revitalizing that area, his relationship with Orange and obviously West Orange. He has made some inroads with New Jersey Transit. And his focus has been to try to make sure that we get a midtown direct line with transit. So he's also been advocating for that as well for a number of years. And I believe that there was supposed to, I think that the petition that they would accept was 7,000 signatures or something to that effect, for them to entertain that. So I think that, you know, that is also, and I say we, I know that that's not our train station, but when people say we don't have a train station in West Orange, I always say, well, there's one three blocks away from our borders. So I like that he's been able to focus his energies on that as well because that benefits our residents. And it's going to be a really nice revitalization and something to offer the residents if there is a, a midtown direct line there. So I'm, I'm happy that. So I'm, I'm happy that he's able to focus on that as well. Councilwoman Williams, I see your hand.
Thank you, Council President. And I just wanted to add, just in working with the developer and their level of responsiveness, that Mr. Albert, whenever we as a council have come to him with asking if he can do any cleanup, the area is getting a little, you know, more clutter than normal. He is very responsive and, and you know, that's the type of partnership that we are looking to have as a long-term relationship. So yes, he does have a longstanding development relationship with the township of West Orange, but that's because it has been a good one. And, and those are the relationships we want to keep and maintain.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Williams, for those comments. If there are no other comments, Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve 2663-21 on second and final reading?
So move.
Councilwoman Castellino?
I'm going to say yes and a quick thank you. Also, I forgot New Jersey Transit for Councilwoman McCartney because you're a big part of that. Her hands in everything, everything, but yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Okay. Pending matters, new matters, council discussion.
So we have, we have a couple of things for council discussion. I want to discuss, and Mr. Gross, I know that you're still on. And with respect to Ms. The firefighter, Belastere's, I'm sorry if I'm saying your last name wrong, comments, we've had a conversation, obviously, you and I, Mr. Gross. And I completely understand the township's position in wanting to ensure the safety of, of everyone, our, our residents who they respond to and the men and women that they work with alongside. You know, I, I try not to put my union hat on when I sit as a council member because that is not my responsibility here on the council. And I did reach out to you to ask, when I read the league's posting, the New Jersey League of Municipalities posting on the perk decision, and for the public perk is the Public Employment Relations Commission, who listens to grievances at, at the workplace for public employees. And they did determine that municipalities were well within their rights to mandate vaccinations for all of their staff. But they also said they should be negotiating things, and this is off the top of my head. I don't have it in front of me and I'm sorry, things such as any discipline, time off, any, any pay and things of that nature. And Mr. Gross, you did say that there have been conversations, which I'm glad to hear that have been conversations. But I, I do have to say that I stand with my council colleagues in asking the administration to reconsider and, and allow our, our firefighters and police officers the ability to have the testing done. I think, and I hear, and I, and I'll share what your, what your response to me was with, with respect to the testing, was that I asked Mr. Gross, why can't they test? Why isn't it acceptable when the state is doing the same for our teachers and students who are in school? And the response was that the testing tells you what happened three days ago, not what happens now. So three days ago, you know, you might test positive, negative, and then you don't know going into someone's house whether or not you are positive. To that, I have to give you some pushback because A, this, the state is, that's what the state is requiring of our teachers and our students who are vulnerable, the younger population who is not able to be vaccinated. And also, our first responders, I, I don't want to separate them from the rest of the staff because I know that there, there's a, what, ninety-nine percent of our non-uniform staff who is already vaccinated, kudos to them. But I also think that it's very different for our first responders because while we were home, including our non-uniform staff, while we were home, they were walking into, into situations where COVID was a risk for them. And this was before the vaccines were even, you know, we're, we're still being talked about. So I, I'm, I'm going to ask, and, and I'd like to hear from my council colleagues as well. I'm going to ask that the administration have a conversation. I'm concerned that there are nineteen of our staff who are on unpaid leave. I understand the protocols, the notification that was given, but I am still, because not only are they our staff and our employees, but they're also our residents', friends and neighbors. So I am going to ask the administration to please reconsider allowing the testing, whether it is a matter of, of negotiating whether they pay for their own testing, whether their unions pay for their testing, whether it's a shared expense. I don't even know if it's an expense, but that, that is my position. And I know that some of my council colleagues also had a position they wanted to share. Councilwoman Castellino?
Uh, Council, Council President, before you do that, if I could just say a, a little bit. Number one, everything is a union issue and we've met with all of our unions. But this is not, at the end of the day, this is not a union issue. This is, this is, we're trying, this is a people issue. And there's a, no, no one could be more appreciative and understanding of the position that are, that are, those eighteen or nineteen people are in. It is not a situation that, that the administration is, is happy about in any way, shape, or form. And in fact, we, we have, we have been talking with our unions. We have, we continue to talk with our unions and we will continue to talk with them and, and to discuss alternatives. We, this is not John Gross or even Mayor Parisi's decision to do this. This, this is, we, we have a medical director, medical director has given us advice and, and based on the science and in terms of a direction that we go. We will continue to evaluate and reevaluate and rediscover with the, the, our medical director as well as the unions and, and the people impacted and, and hopes that we get this resolved, that no one wants this to, to go the direction that it's going in right now, but it is where we are. I'm not going to tonight go through the differences in facts or, or, or ideas or anything because it's, it's, it, it doesn't, doesn't solve anything tonight. I'm not going to talk specific about any, any person's case. But I, I'm going to say that we, we're, we're actively dealing with that union as well as other unions' membership or, or leadership to, to hopefully find, you know, some solution. But at this point in time, we are where we are. I spoke to the mayor just before the meeting. The mayor said that he was willing to have a discussion with, with members, any member of the council. But, but that discussion should include our medical director. Because the end of the day, he, he and I are, are not, you know, the, 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 the driving force on the medicine here. It is the doctors that, that, that the township employs as, as medical director. So.
Just one last question. Is that the same medical director for the Board of Ed?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Yes, the answer is yes.
So, so that to me is a little also, you know, confusing, if not concerning, that the same medical director would have two different opinions for a Board of Ed. Because while, yes, I understand that our first responders have to physically go into someone's home that, you know, may carry, you know, and the possibility. But our, our educators who are also opting to test and not vaccinate are going into twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-eight, however many students are in their classrooms, into their homes by way of their students going there. And I, I'm not looking to argue the point. I just want you to understand my position and, and, and I really want us to reconsider.
I, I, I do. And, and I'm not, I'm not going to jump to the conclusion that the, that the, that the advice that, that is being given is different. I don't know what advice is being, I know what advice we're getting. I don't know the context of, of the conversations that help, that happen elsewhere. I know the context of our conversations. So, so I, I'll, I'll limit it to that. I can tell you that we're very sensitive and concerned about these eighteen employees. We're also very concerned about the well-being of other employees. And we're, well, and we're concerned about the welfare of residents who, who have no choice of who we send to their home. So, so it is, it is a complicated issue. And, and our goal is to do the best that we can do to protect everyone. And, and, and we, and we're listening to the advice at this point of, of our medical director. And, and that's the basis of, of the decision-making that we've made.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. I'm going to call my council colleagues, Councilman Rutherford, and then Councilwoman Castellino, and then McCartney.
Thank you, Council President. After speaking with each of my council colleagues today and then also speaking with Mr. Gross regarding this particular matter, Mr. Gross was agreeable to set up a meeting with the mayor and now the medical director. And I think that is the appropriate forum to have the conversation. I know it is a sensitive issue. It's a nuanced issue. And I think because of that, it is, it is better to have that conversation outside of the public view. And I understand that I'll get some pushback for that from members of the public and maybe even my council colleagues and others. That's fine. But it is a difficult conversation to have in a recorded session that, you know, we're, we're all, this is, we're all in elected office one way or another. And these conversations are difficult. What I think is important is that in my conversations with Mr. Gross, public health is the number one priority. In my conversations with my council colleagues, having a fair process for making these decisions for the unique needs of some of our employees and improving and including their voices and as we deal with this ma, this employment matter, proving employee relations, I think that's, that's, you know, equally important. And I do believe if we can sit down and have a frank conversation about these matters, that we can come to some decision that balances both public health and the needs of our employees in a way that makes sense for everyone. No one wants to spread the virus. We're all trying to, to stop the virus. I know I'm vaccinated. My entire family that is eligible is vaccinated. And I encourage everybody to be vaccinated. But we do have to make some room for exceptions. And I think that's the conversation that we should have. And, and as far as I understand, that's the conversation that is willing to be had. And I am hopeful and expectant that that will happen within the next day or two. Certainly, you know, by the end of the week. So I would hope that we can get that kind of grace and leeway to do that kind of work and then be able to speak more broadly with all of the employees about what the outcome of those meetings are. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford. I know that employment matters are very, and, and I know that when Councilwoman Castellino had to deal with some of that, she was very nervous that we talk about direct employees by name and we cannot. But I certainly agree.
Also, it's not our decision, right? Like we have to, this is an administration decision. We can voice opinion and advocate. And, but it is really up to them.
And that, that's the truth. I agree with you there. Councilwoman Castellino?
So yeah, so this is a really difficult subject matter. And, you know, in full disclosure, before I start talking, I'm fully vaccinated. I encouraged my family members to get vaccinated. I lost my mom from COVID this past year, as most of you know, and it's, it's been really tough. I've been, you know, learned a lot about COVID this past year, especially starting, I was council president last year, as I stated earlier in the evening, was at that very first coronavirus meeting on March Friday, the thirteenth, March thirteenth, when we, all the rest of us went home to wait out the pandemic. As I say, in our pajamas, while our firefighters and first responders were, were, were out there, you know, out there in, in the streets and, and having to respond, not knowing what they're walking into. And I, I know the public is nervous. I don't blame them. I feel bad for the mayor and the administration because the media doesn't help this situation. There's mixed messaging. There's been mixed messaging about the dos and don'ts of this virus. So there's a lot of anxiety about it and rightfully so. But for me, it, it, this has been tough. This has been really tough because I've seen what our first responders have done. They went out there in the beginning. We didn't even have enough PPE for them in the very beginning. We were, you know, and to Mr. You know, Gross's credit, he would, you know, be out there trying to scrounge early last March and April and our firefighters themselves and police officers trying to get their own PPE while the rest of us were home. So, you know, there's a lot of angst over this and I hope it gets resolved this week. Administration's in a bad spot with it. But I, I really am upset with this and I really disagreed with this policy. I feel that we should have followed what, you know, what happened with the teachers. Are we, there should have been a conversations, you know, we, we go to improve fields and we have a conversation with school board of, of, I'm the liaison, like what, what are they doing? And then we try to make a decision altogether, what, you know. So I don't know what happened there, why there was a disconnect between us and them, especially when we have the same position that, that we use. So I, I haven't been privy to that and I don't want to place blame. But it's been really tough with the messaging. So I hope the administration is able to handle this. You know, we have, you know, over a million people coming into our country that don't need to be vaccinated or shown a vax card. And, and now we have to show our first responders. And, you know, in New York, they're looking for your vax card. Again, I'm pro vax if it's for you. But I've, I've talked to many individuals who's had COVID, who's had experiences with, you know, whatever, whatever they had with. I'm not going to go into that to give more mis-messaging to the public. But people have valid reasons why they're afraid to get vaccinated. And I think we need to be respectful of that. And, and taking their sick time away from them or making those kind of accommodations, I'm sorry, is, is not acceptable for me. So thank you, Council President.
Thank you. And, and I, I understand that this is an administrative decision and, and council doesn't have a stake in this game. However, you know, it is, you know, I feel our responsibility to advocate when we, when, when we are contacted. Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you. I can hear the angst and I, I can feel it. And I know when the mandate came out, my immediate reaction was also to ask for a testing because that is what's expected of educators. My staff is all vaccinated. This whole conversation of we're talking about police and fire, first responders, but we also have inspectors in the planning department that go into homes. We have health officials that go out to, to people's homes. So it involves a lot of interface. And there, to me, there is so much logic behind that forty-eight hour test period contracting something within that wait time. That does make sense. But what I really would like to see this meeting with the medical doctor because it is a mixed message right now, what we're hearing. Because I, you know, educators are allowed to be tested every couple of days, at least once a week. And, and we're saying we're not. So I would like to understand why is there a difference? As you said, when I'm, we're in a classroom full of people, children, students every day. I would like to understand why it would be okay for one and not, and not for the other. Just a clarification on that. There was during public comment the talk about natural antibodies. Also with CDC guidelines, it says that employees must be vaccinated or submit to weekly testing for educators regardless of their proof of antibodies. So that is not in the CDC guidelines to just have a high natural antibody proof.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
No, I just, I think it would be important. I would like to have a conversation to understand.
Okay. Um, Councilwoman Castellino, do you have your hand back up or?
Just two seconds.
All right. Wait, I just wanted to finish about the, the other thing I questioned about. All right. Wait, I just wanted to finish about the, the other thing I did question about the allowing for testing. But initially, I did ask about accommodation requests for medical and health, that people are fearful of getting a vaccine. Um, and would that be something that the, uh, could be considered?
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. I didn't mean to cut you off. Apologies. Uh, Councilwoman Castellino.
I'm sorry. I just neglected to mention, I, I mentioned our first responders. But as to Council McCartney's point, our health officials and our property maintenance and public works, uh, personnel were also out there in the very beginning stages. I just didn't want to think, I forgot about them as well. Um, but, um, again, they were out there too. So I just wanted to mention that and to thank, thank them for, for braving it uh, way back in the beginning of the pandemic. Thank you.
Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Council President. Um, certainly in agreement with all of my council colleagues' commentary. Um, but one of the most disturbing, um, com- aspects for me personally is just our level of inconsistency as a townwide community. And that is that we need to have one methodology across the board, um, for everyone. Whether it be our Board of Ed members, our students, our teachers, uh, we just need to be consistent. And however we are going to implement this, it should be across the board and, and equitable for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I want to move us on to, um, the next, um, um, item that I wanted to discuss with my council colleagues. Mr. Gross, are you there? Mr. Gross?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Um, one of the things I wanted to discuss with my council colleagues and ask you to, um, your perspective. You and I had this discussion as well. Um, moving forward, um, being proactive, and, and Mr. Trank, you and I have had this discussion as well. Um, and I sent the mayor an email and he said he'd be happy to engage in this conversation with us as well. Understanding climate change is no longer climate change, but a climate crisis. Um, having had the experience, the unfortunate experience at two seventy-five Northfield Avenue. Um, Councilwoman Castellino, I also mentioned this to you and Councilman Rutherford, I think I had this conversation with you as well. Um, I want us, and I don't know what it entails, but I would like the township to take a proactive approach in, in hiring, um, or retaining the services of an engineer or a geotechnical engineer. Um, I understand that there is going to be a cost associated with it. I don't know if that can be a shared cost with, with landlords, but specifically, um, with a priority to survey those homes, um, that are butted up against these rock face or mountain face, um, areas in our township. I think that we need to do that study because ultimately, um, I'm, I'm going to ask the, um, my council colleagues to support, um, strengthening the zoning ordinance that gives variances to steep slopes. Um, I think that, that it is something that we need to, to do differently. Um, as we move forward in the space of, of climate change. Um, we can't afford not to, is, is my position. I don't think that, um, you know, waiting for a landlord to do it is something that we should be doing. But, um, is there any, um, information you can provide? Is that something that you think that is within the capacity of the township to do, Mr. Trank, Mr. Gross?
Um, so I'll start, and then Mr. Gross, um, may have other information. Um, so specifically, the mayor has directed that, uh, we prepare, uh, a, a letter for the mayor's, uh, review. And Mr. Laporte provided me with some comments tonight detailing, uh, the situation that occurred at two seventy-five. And, uh, that letter is to the governor and the lieutenant governor, who also serves as the commissioner of the Department of Community Affairs, and asking the state, uh, to, um, to come in and immediately inspect those ridgelines. Um, a- as you suggest, uh, this is far beyond the capacity of, of any one person. Uh, it could be a very significant expense to review it. Clearly, as we all know, Hurricane Ida was a five-hundred-year, uh, event. Uh, but that doesn't change the fact that the ridges and the conditions of them have probably been occurring for thousands of years. So now is the time, you're right, for sure, it's a climate crisis. And, uh, with, as I think Councilman, uh, Rutherford said earlier, the depth, the extent, you know, of every single weather event, uh, and, and the fear we all go through, even last night, uh, we need the state to step in. Uh, so I think that's gonna be one aspect of it. The second aspect goes to your point. And that is, do we try to allocate funds to have a geotechnical firm, uh, come in and try to identify, I'll use the word hotspots, or risk that are occurring? Um, we started to get a couple of prices on that, frankly. Uh, that will not occur overnight. Uh, Mr. Laporte wanted to get a second set of prices on that, uh, and, uh, we'll try to present that to you, uh, as soon as possible. But I don't want to forget, we are gonna ask our state leaders, because we say this is a state issue. Just like, you know, in, in Michigan, they had, you know, water issues. We have a ridge issue here, and, and none of us takes that lightly, uh, as you saw, uh, when we all reacted as a community on October eleventh. So, um, we, we're open to any suggestions and ideas. Certainly, we are hearing from the public, um, and, uh, it's a huge issue far beyond any, far beyond the town, to be frank.
I'm really, I'm really happy to hear that, um, the mayor, um, has asked, um, the state to step in, and you've, um, issued that memo as well. That's, um, a step in certainly the right direction. I, I really think that's a, a great start.
I, I, I ju- I just want to add that, um, this, to, to comprehensively do this, um, this is, i- it's probably beyond anybody's idea of what something like this might cost. We, we, you know, in terms of looking at it, even on a limited basis, it's near, if not more than six figures. So i- 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 it is, you know, um, one of the reasons that I think that when we talked about it, this is bigger than us. And, and, and that's why we really do need the state to, to come in and provide its expertise. It, you know, I, I believe they have the kind of professionals, uh, available to them to at least advise us, if not help us. And so I think that is the major first step. Um, and then from there, see, you know, what, what can or shouldn't be done.
Very, very happy to hear that. Um, Councilwoman McCartney, and then Councilman Rutherford, and then Councilwoman Castellino.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you for even bringing this forward. I think it is an excellent idea, idea. And this is great news to hear that, uh, we would move forward with this and ask for the state to, um, to help us. And as John said, it is bigger than us. And it reminds me of the, um, Corps of Engineers working on the Railway River, uh, that goes through Melbourne and out to Cranford, and the, uh, work that's being done there. It's, you know, it's, it's bigger than them as well. Um, what's not bigger than them, it, bigger than us. Um, what I was going to suggest is amending our steep slope ordinance. Our ordinance reads right now of that, um, we can build into the grading or we work on the grading of the slope, but it does not address the cliff um, and any setback at the top of the cliff. So I did want to, um, speak to Lenny or CME, our engineers. Um, actually, I did speak to CME already, uh, just to see if that's something that we can pursue. So I would like to consider that amending our steep slope ordinance to look at the top of the ridge and not just the grading at the bottom. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. It is something that, um, I would be very supportive of and, and, and certainly want to pursue that. Councilman Rutherford?
Uh, thank you, Council President. I do applaud the administration for the steps they're taking proactively to address this townwide. I think that's the right approach, uh, to, uh, and Councilwoman McCartney had a, a very valid point. We need to look at the entire slope, not just the, uh, the, the slope itself, but the top of the ridge. But in addition to that, my question is, you know, is, i- given that these five-hundred-year storms are now happening like every two or three years, is it possible to stay, uh, construction or development on these steep slopes until we have better information? We, we, I think, are, are putting people and property at risk if we don't, uh, do something, you know, to stop those, uh, developments on steep slopes. So is there anything that we can do in the meantime to stop the development of construction on steep slopes until we have better information?
Um, we can change the ordinance. Go ahead, Mr. Trank.
Yeah, well.
Well, again, certainly, and that's why, um, uh, Councilwoman McCartney, as the planning board liaison, certainly any project will likely go before them. I do have to though, um, say again to the council that, uh, the council in approving the single largest remaining track of land that will be potentially developed as soon as the process beginning next year will, will obviously be on the S X L's border, and, and that's the, uh, Highland property. Now, just keep in mind, what we did as a result of that, nothing will get developed anywhere near that, uh, ridge. And the project, uh, which you approved as part of the affordable housing settlement, uh, will be set back and will basically be three, a horseshoe type of project, uh, away from the ridge. So, but again, the planning board still look at it, and I think it's totally appropriate, especially now for the planning board and the professionals involved to pay extra scrutiny when that comes, uh, for, for their review. Uh, but, but, so in terms of staying in construction, I'm not aware of, but obviously, Mr. Laporte or Councilwoman McCartney, that there's anything that is imminent that's gonna be developed on any of those ridgelines.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Castellino, and then Councilwoman McCartney, I see your hand up again.
So, um, Councilwoman, uh, McCartney mentioned earlier, so the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, uh, the, the, do we, the state has to bring them in? Or that's, that's the assistance that we will get from this, uh, from the state? Will they bring them in to do a study for us, or?
It's really hard to say. Um, you know, it depends on, you, you know, there, there has to be some initial work done to see whether or not what the scope is, uh, i- i- in terms of.
Yeah.
They, they would, if, 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 i- the Army Corps would come in if there's a fix, right? It, it would, to, to fix the problem, once it's determined. Right now, it's just gonna be investigatory. So you're not gonna see, but you might see representation from the Army Corps. They might bring that. But, but you're not gonna bring them in en masse.
Okay, so that they'll come in, yeah, on a fix, but not on this initial study. We would have to get somebody to do a study. Which is, obviously, is gonna be quite costly.
They may be involved, but they won't be the only ones involved. I don't, I don't suspect. So.
Okay. And, and I agree with the, with the conversation with the, the top of the ridge. I remember years ago with, uh, maybe when the grant first did their first phase, Mr. Trank, if you recall, if it was them. Um, when Estro Road got all flooded out, um, years ago, that whole area back there in the Redwood section um, had gotten flooded out. I don't know what the remedy was, and it hasn't helped. It hasn't happened since. So I don't know, you know, what could be done or put in place when development is done, such as in that neighborhood. So.
The, the, the initial steps are gonna be to determine stability. You know, what, what is the current situation in terms of safety is concerned? That's, that's number one, and that's the very first thing. Once that's determined, from that will be a, the next phase will be, okay. You know, what, 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 how bad is it, and what needs to be done, or what could be done, or what can't be done. So.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you all for, uh, the conversation. Certainly appreciate that. There's just two more, um, items that I want to bring, um, for council discussion and consideration. Obviously, um, this is the time that we, oh, Mr. Trank, did you have something?
Well, I, I just, I, I think what's, um, you know, part and parcel is, there were some questions. And, and you correctly, um, said it was unfortunate that there was a, uh, maybe a misunderstanding in the timeline here of what happened at two seventy-five.
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, and, and I, I just want to clarify, because again, um, you know, the council president, certainly the mayor, um, certainly Laura Van Dyke, and I always have to, you know, everything that happens here on emergency services revolves somewhat around Nick Algrino. And he, um, did an amazing job. The cert team, the cert team, uh, mobilized. I think there was eight or ten of them out there. So I just want to give you, uh, council persons, and most of you have heard this separately, but to the extent the public has gotten any degree of misinformation here, uh, the timeline is important. And many people have said, how come this didn't happen? Why did this happen at ten thirty, eleven o'clock at night? Uh, and, and I just want to give you the accurate timeline, because in the end, yes, it's important that we always, uh, learn and do better the next time. Uh, but I think it's important for you to know what we did do this time. Uh, and, and those facts are as follows. Um, after Idaho occur, uh, occurred, our construction official was out there right away. And the four apartments closest to that ridge were immediately determined based upon empirical scientific evidence to be unsafe. And those four families of the forty-four were moved out. And those were the units closest to the embankment. Immediately thereafter, there were three sets of engineers who were called to the site as the fixes. Uh, and insurance companies were involved. The construction official, Mr. Tracy, uh, was in daily contact. And there were reputable contractors and whatnot onsite, and there were responsive professionals. Um, they looked at two major fixes, and, and part of the reason that, um, this is a, a significant issue uh, as we go forward is, um, this is not a, uh, this is gonna be, when you, the, when you diagnose this issue, the fix and where they came to conclude is, is a, is a millions of dollars fix, uh, here particularly and anywhere else. So specifically, the three engineering firms came out. They investigated doing what they do. For those of you, we've all traveled on Route eighty, where they have the wire mesh. They investigated doing that, putting the wire mesh up that would stabilize and avoid. The response that came back was that potentially drilling into that to fix the wire mesh would, uh, create this, uh, more destabilization. They then thought about bringing in more brick faces. And again, let's not forget, we had forty families still living there who, everything was safe. And by the way, not with seeing the fact that we moved all the people out of there at ten thirty, eleven o'clock at night on October eleventh, uh, there hasn't been any further, uh, destabilization. I believe even after last night, it was carefully reviewed. But that doesn't change the fact that when an engineering firm that's, that's licensed by the state of New Jersey, Langen Engineering, um, was out there on October eighth, a Friday, or Thursday of that week, when they decided to generate a letter that was not emailed to the town until after hours, and that was the beginning of a holiday weekend. So that letter was not discovered until Monday, October eleventh, which was a day off. Uh, Mr. Tracy, it got to his hands, it got to Mr. Laporte's hands, Mr. Laporte immediately got it to Mr. Gross's hands. At six P M., I got the call, and I was provided with a copy of the letter. We then immediately began calling other additional engineering firms. And so again, I don't want to forget, because this letter was disseminated to every resident, and it's been available to the public and certainly, uh, to every member of the council. The letter says, "The slope located behind the apartment complex is not stable, and there is a high risk of a further failure, which would likely result in significant property damage and possible loss of life." Accordingly, it is Langen's professional opinion that until the slope is stabilized, and this is underlying, the apartment complex must be evacuated immediately. So when this letter was read, uh, on late Monday, uh, October eleventh, the issue was, were they talking about the part closest to the slope, the embankment? Or were they talking about the entirety of the apartment complex? So there were immediately phone calls. Mr. Gross and I were on conference calls, finding these people, uh, on Monday night and, uh, trying to discern whether this was talking about what we already knew and what had been reported, and Mr. Tracy had acted on, or whether this was the entire forty-four units. And for those of you, and a lot of you have seen the aerial, it's a horseshoe. It's built in a horseshoe. So there's a part of the complex that's pretty far away from the slope that's much closer to the Northfield. Um, this apartment complex, as, as you all may know, is about eighty years old. Um, we got on the phone with the owner. We explained to him that we were not prepared to take any. Uh, the, the mayor's immediate reaction was, I don't care what anybody says, the wording of the letter is clear. If there is possible loss of life, we'll disrupt people so they can complain tomorrow as opposed to us having to deal with a calamity. And as I think, uh, Councilwoman Castellino, deal with anything that would even get close to the cert side. So we're not gonna be the crew that got here the day before, the day after, and said we could have, should have, or might have known. So again, by seven o'clock, the decision had been made that we were gonna evacuate them. So again, by seven o'clock, the decision had been made that we were gonna evacuate them. Again, Warven Dyke immediately on the phone called every hotel in this town. Of course, the first thing they wanna know is, you must be joking, you want forty rooms? And second thing is, where's your credit card? So uh, that was not an easy feat. Mr. uh, Algrino got a jitney. The fire chief was out there with uh, with the fire department. We were not gonna do this without police department. Uh, and the search team was uh, again, everything that you could ever want for volunteer professionals in the way they dealt with the public. So by the time we met uh, in conference room one oh nine, uh, Mr. Algrino showed uh, the video that he had gotten. Uh, from Mr. Lapore and Mr. Tracy, uh, it was clear what had to occur. And by ten o'clock, we were out there on the site. Mr. Gross came in, I was present. Um, the mayor was available by phone and directing us throughout. Uh, and literally went door to door. And yes, you can imagine, there were people who were unhappy. Uh, and we did everything humanly possible um, uh, to make that uh, to explain it to them. We gave them the letter. We explained to them that this was not something we were doing lightly, but that we could not uh, live in good conscience without explaining the situation. Um, we immediately, uh, the next night was a council meeting on October uh, twelfth. You allowed us to put on an emergency ordinance, a resolution, uh, and we immediately began around the clock police. That continued until last Friday when uh, the owner took over private security and fenced the entire area. Because as the council people who were at the the uh, Wilshire Grand meeting um, heard, they wanted to make sure. That there couldn't be any uh, type of access. So again, until uh, the fencing and this new security was there, there were one, sometimes two police cars there around the clock. So again, the timeline of October eleven and the timeline of this town's notification. Uh, was nothing short of miraculous and required again. Uh, um, acting director Fonzino was there. Every department uh, pitched in to to make it happen. And again, that's why the selfless work of every member of this council. Since that point has been really appreciated um, on all levels. Um, uh, because again, it it was a pressure situation. There was a decision made. Uh, but again, um, you know, as one clergy person, and again, we immediately, and I know council president, you were on that call. We immediately reached out, every member of the clergy had a a conference call with them. I think it was uh, Wednesday uh, morning. Uh, October thirteenth or 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 Thursday morning, October fourteenth, and asked them to help pitch in. And 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 a couple, several of the clergy people were there at the Wilshire Grand, uh, and many of the clergy uh, had me and gotten the word out. We called every apartment complex in town uh, from the the uh, the apartment complex across from St. Farmist to Mr. Alfred's complex. Uh, to um, Alan Hammer has a couple complexes in town, uh, and and said, you need to put these people on the top. Of of the priority list. So um, you know, the timeline here, and again, the hotels all. Um, again, I had to go to the hotels that night, not that my credit card is large enough, but uh, certainly, uh, I was persuasive in saying. That Mr. Gross would be good for the the money and uh, giving his uh, personal self now. So again, we contacted the prosecutor that night because we were dealing with the real possibility. That if we did have issues, how we would navigate uh, people who were not susceptible to our uh, persuasion. Uh, but in the end, everybody um, came through. And again, uh, as everyone knows, the county was amazing. They had a, they had an emergency COVID testing site up and running, so their people going for apartments to get COVID testing. Um, they brought their uh, homeless prevention people out, uh, and then obviously, uh, through the efforts of council president. Um, Congresswoman uh, Sharrow uh, had FEMA onsite. So a- again. Um, there there can't be, uh, I don't believe there is any legitimate basis to say that we did everything humanly possible with the knowledge we had. Recognizing that, you know, we don't have this expertise um, to to mobilize and and to get people's attention. As quickly as humanly possible. We're we're not running, and you know, as someone said earlier, this is not immediate thing. This is about forty-four families. And and a lot of you met those families as we talked to them after the public part, you know, there are nurses, there are teachers, there are seniors. Um, you know, there are young children. So yes, they will always be traumatized by this, as I think will all of us. But frankly, um, the alternatives were were just not acceptable on any level. So. That's the timeline and that's what, you know, you all, uh, in conjunction with uh, incredible people like Warren Van Dyke and Nick Algrino. And Chief Vecchio and and all the police department accomplished in literally um, as as within hours. Of it being clear uh, that uh, there was um, a clear and present danger to the health and safety of our neighbors.
I really appreciate that um, timeline because I know um, and and it's incredible to me. Um, how in a situation of a crisis where there is so much trauma. Um, and and you're right, I think we're all traumatized. I I heard rain and then the state of emergency. And my heart immediately broke. You know, I'm reaching out to these families because, you know, uh, there are moments of tear shedding on phone calls. And and it's really um, traumatic for them. But I I do appreciate all of the efforts that are being made. Um, and continue to be made to help these families. Um, so I I think that instead of um, looking at at fault. And you know, are you thinking the township is liable? We should come together. And I wonder if those, those who are making those criticisms, you know. Where is the contribution for your rest, for for your neighbors? Um, so I appreciate the clarity on on that for all of us. Um, Councilwoman McCartney, so your hand go up.
Well, before you want, before you spoke, I was basically going to say the same thing. Just thank you to Mr. Trank for. I just so appreciate when we get that in-depth explanation um, as a timeline and just the proactive approach that you. And Mr. Gross, I see Chief Abbott is still here and everyone else that has been involved in this, um, just really appreciate that. Um, and I also wanted to say before that um, I feel Councilman Rutherford brought up a very interesting suggestion. Um, about uh, halting development if that. Uh, my sister lives in Western Maryland and I know years ago, a lot of the farmland, many acres of farmland were. Under risk of development and the state put a moratorium on that development until everything we're discussing. Um, the impact of children in the school system, the drainage, the slopes. Anything that would affect any of that development um, was evaluated before uh, anything. Uh, could actually occur. So uh, I don't know if we're gonna call it a moratorium, but at least. Let's determine if we can amend our steep or steep slope ordinance before anything does come before us.
Certainly appreciate that. Um, I I who gets that ball rolling, Mr. Trank? Is that your office or is that?
Yes, um, I'll work with Mr. Kizer and uh, cause we as uh, certainly as Councilwoman McCartney recalls. We put a tremendous amount of effort into the steep slope. It was challenged, uh, but but I certainly do agree we should redouble it. And and it's a suggestion to set back off the top of a cliff. Certainly seems rationally related to everything we're going through and certainly while we're trying to evaluate. Uh, where where that safe point is. So um, yeah, so we'll try to get that to you. Certainly, I'll I'll pull the ordinance and we'll try to get to that, i- if not the next meeting, you know, in November.
Perfect. Thank you so very much. I really appreciate that. Um, council members and I, oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Williams, I see your hand up. You're a, you're on mute.
Just wanted to also acknowledge, um, in addition to all the other support and resources that the township had available for the two seventy-five residents. That they also had mental health professionals available um, for all of the residents to talk to during this traumatic experience. So again, uh, they left no stone unturned. Every uh, aspect and component of of support that we could offer. Um, it it was all addressed.
Thank you. Yes, you're absolutely right. Um, that was really necessary and important. Um, council colleagues, in in light of what has hap- is is this um, Councilmember Rutherford? Yes, no, I know.
I- is it possible to get a list of the residents that are stay uh, uh, from two seventy-five that are staying? In efficiency type rooms where they can cook? Is is that, is that known? Is that possible to?
I can, I can ask Laura, um, Van Dyke.
Okay. Yeah, please get that list to me. We can help them uh, with some grocery resources as well. Um, without them having to go to shop, right?
Awesome. Um, yes, Councilwoman McCartney, I know um, that we do have the A B C hearing. Um, but there were just two other um, issues that I wanted to um, bring to the council's attention. Um, and and ask for consideration. I also emailed the mayor and administration about this earlier. I sent it to all of you as an F Y I, not looking for any comments or response, but um, you know, I I know what our position was when it came to Ridge Road. Um, initially, I did advocate for it. Um, then I became very complacent over the fact that nobody was purchasing it. Or had, was interested in purchasing it. Um, but I I had to um. Um, really do some um, introspection. And on Tuesday morning, when I received a call from um, the administration. Mr. Trank um, informed me what had happened. I I, besides being shocked, I have not um. I have not stopped thinking about the need to preserve um, the twelve acre forest since that time. It's not um, it's not a matter of of Chicken Little, the head, the the sky is falling. And I think Councilman Rutherford early in our conversation said, it's not a matter of if it's falling, it's a matter of when it's falling. Um, but because that is um, such a, the, you know, twelve acres is not that that much. And even if uh, one home were to be developed there, I think that that could cause um, quite a disturbance. Um, and and put us in a position we don't wanna be in. So I have um, reached out to the administration. Um, the mayor has responded. He is not supportive. I am asking the council to reconsider their positions. Um, if you were not supportive of it, to at least um, let's let's continue to have discussions about it. I don't ever wanna be in a position that we were in when it came to um, two seventy-five. And I'm not saying that that's going to happen every time someone develops on a cliff, but if it serves two purposes. Right? It's it's certainly saves um. Prevents any possibility, if we preserve it, from it ever being developed, right? So we don't have to worry about, you know, uh, two seventy-five happening on Ridge Road. But also, um, you know, it helps our environment. So I I I understand the mayor's position. Um, and I know where I was before, but at this time, I I have um, certainly done an about face and think that it's something necessary that we need to pursue. Uh, Councilwoman Castellino. You're uh, you're muted. I'm telling you, you're muted and I'm muted.
I need to get a mouse for this computer. Um, it's eleven o'clock at night. I don't wanna get a full blown discussion. There's, I could list a, list a whole bunch of reasons. Why I I get it. I I I think I'd rather go the route of looking at our steep slope ordinance. And and we could talk about this in the future, but my recommendation is, you know, it's eleven o'clock at night already. We still have A B C hearing. So I I don't wanna have a full blown out discussion on this tonight. Again, I'm 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 one of five, so. But I I'm I'm still not supportive of it. I think we could, we could uh, go the steep slope route and amend that ordinance.
Certainly appreciate that. Um, uh, I I don't expect a full blown discussion. Just wanted to put this out there so that you know where I am and and why I'm there. And um, you know, I I do wanna have a discussion about this at at some point in the near future. Um, and then that's just the very last thing, Mr. Gross. Um, this is gonna entail some spending, so I'm I'm gonna need you on here to to listen. Mr. Gross, are you still there? Yep, I saw you unmute yourself. Um, because. Um, we have this land acquisition that we, well, now too, in the downtown redevelopment area. I am asking the administration um, for many reasons, but I think because we're doing things differently. That um, and Mr. Gross, you and I had a conversation about this. There is a a a process of a charrette. I don't know if um, Paul Greigl's firm does it. I wouldn't mind if it was his firm. I know there's a firm um. That I I refer to the mayor and to Mr. Gross um, out of Nerf that also does it. Uh, but I would like us to, um, particularly since we don't have a town planner. I would like us to engage the process of a charrette moving into the downtown redevelopment. So that we can at least have the voices and the participation of the public as we develop a plan. That doesn't mean that every um, recommendation or suggestion that comes from the public will um. You know, be something that is is adopted, but certainly, I think it's necessary. We've come to the public. We've. We are um, investing a lot of um, finances into these acquisitions that we should have a process. Uh, that includes the public by way of a charrette. Um, Councilwoman Castellino.
So being the downtown liaison and being on the meetings where the public's more than welcome to come and participate. And there unfortunately, there is always lack of participation. Um, also, the neighborhood preservation grant that we didn't get this round, which I'm really disappointed on. Because we were gonna, it was gonna enable us to hire a firm to do the strategic plan. And help us with that planning process. Um, I am not in support of charrette, but I would like to. Talk about that economic developer that we kept discussing that we were gonna. And I think it's partially still in the in the budget, Mr. Gross. Um, um, if it was still there, a piece of it. But I I I'd rather spend the funds in that direction and and get someone who's gonna be dedicated. I appreciate all the public input. I appreciate the public support, but being involved in the downtown, we need that person. And we need that s- person sooner than later. So that's the, I I would like to, I agree with you that we need something. But I I think it needs to be more in line with the economic developer per person, per uh, position. Sorry, it's getting late to have these discussions, Council President. I admire you for trying to get it all in, but it's my brain's going uh, going.
Put this out there just so that we have it and you, we can process this later.
Given the timeline, um, I think it it it's, there there's definitely a a room for discussion either way. Uh, I I was actually involved with the shred process back when I was with South Orange. So it 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 is, it ca- it can be very involved and it could be limited. So you really need to think about um, the scope of it. There's a lot of things to 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 put some thought into. Again, I think eleven o'clock at night is probably not, and we could do some of it offline. Uh, and in at least in 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 setting a uh, uh, the the table so that everybody understands we're talking about. You're, everybody's talking about the same thing and not something different. So uh, that I, that's what I would suggest, maybe between now and the next meeting. We have some offline discussions, just talking about the the practicality, you know, of what shrettes are, can be or or might be. And then at least everybody maybe comes to together with the same base of information. Cause I think there may be some. Some people in in your, in in people's minds see it differently. I think it's important that you all be talking about the same thing.
Absolutely agree. Thank you, Mr. Gross.
My hand shot up also, um, and she'll beat me to it. But to say, uh, basically the same thing, we do have a planner. Uh, Paul Greigl is our town planner and he has been involved in the downtown redevelopment uh, project. I would like to see him involved in this. And uh, money was allocated for an economic developer. So that is conversation. That's why my hand shot up to remind you that uh.
No, I do. I know, I know that the budgeting is there because we haven't hired an economic developer, but since we are approaching. Um, you know, this acquisition, which is a large acquisition, what I don't want to happen is that we have a redeveloper come in and tell us what they want to do. I want us to have a very specific targeted plan for that area, and then we meet somewhere in the middle. Because obviously, the interest of a municipality and a township of what they wanna see is is completely self-centered. And it should be. However, a redeveloper also has a very self-centered position where they're in the business of making money, right? So we have to meet somewhere in the middle, and that's why I think a a targeted discussion that includes um, the public. So that, you know, there is that process that of of inclusion um, would be helpful. And I know that those funds are there for the last two years, so um, I don't see why we couldn't do both. Um, Councilman Rutherford.
Uh, thank you, Council President. Not to belabor the point, I I do think it is critical to have more resident engagement. And involvement in these kinds of projects. They've been crying out for it. That's some of the criticism that each of us has received. And this is a way to address that in, in a, a meaningful way, that allows them some input before the project is done. So whether we hire an economic development a, a person in that role tomorrow or not, we still need to have a process to incorporate some ideas from, and feedback from the residents. So I'm fully supportive of it, Council President.
Thank you. I really do appreciate all of my council colleagues' comments. And like I said, it's just food for thought, and we'll certainly revisit it. Madam Clerk.
Okay. Well, we have an ABC hearing, so did you want to say goodnight and then go into the hearing?
Yeah, we, we're not going to have anything else on the agenda. It's just the ABC hearing, so everybody can, you know, we'll say goodnight to everyone at this point. Wait, but does it end the meeting if we? Yeah, it does end the meeting for everyone. Yeah, so we'll just, we'll just close the council meeting and, or adjourn the council meeting and reopen as the ABC board. So motion to adjourn.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the ABC hearing is open and the meeting is adjourned.